To order, Mr.
All right, let's call the meeting to order. The city council is, I guess, a special meeting, really, today to, on the 2nd of February 2021. And this is for the planning commission vacancy. We'll be looking at that. We're going to go to the roll call. Janet, if you don't mind.
Sure. Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Present.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Vice Mayor Clovin?
I'm here.
And Mayor Wolf?
I am here. Okay. Now, we're going to go on to, Jim is going to sing the National Anthem.
I am.
All right. So, all right. So, this is the planning
Curiously.
vacancy meeting, and we're doing this over Zoom because of our COVID restrictions and by state mandate, we can do that over Zoom. So, we have two candidates to be interviewing today, and we have some questions. So, we want to, if you don't mind, I'll just assign the questions out. I hope you all received the questions from Raina today. Excuse me.
I did send out the revised questions, a total of 10, so that there are two for each council member. And that is what Mayor Wolf is referring to. So, you're welcome now to get organized for that. And your first candidate will be signing on at 10 after 6:00.
Okay, good. And this, this meeting is being recorded for, for the public?
Yes.
See the replay. So, I'll take, how about I'll take one and 10, and then I'll divvy this up for the rest of you if you don't mind. Peter, you could take two, and Holly, three. Jeff could take four, and Jim can take five. And we'll reverse it a bit here with your Peter, take six. And Holly can do seven. Jeff could do eight. Jim will do nine. And I'll take one and 10. Is that all right with everybody?
Repeat that one more time.
Back it up. Okay. All right. So, I'm going to take one and 10. Peter is going to take two and six. Holly will take three and seven. Jeff could take four and eight. And then Jim, you can take five and nine.
Got it.
Okay. Unless anybody has a specific question they want to ask, we need to switch it up. I think we're, you know, pretty standard stuff. And then we're going to do, we're going to do this and also allow follow-up question if you, if you have one of your own. I don't have a problem with that. I don't think anybody else does. If you have a follow-up, you need to ask something. What was that? All right.
Right. Are there any other changes, questions, et cetera?
I don't have anything for this.
Mayor, questions about the process? Janet, who is our first candidate when they sign on at 6:10?
Sorry for the delay. Our first candidate is going to be Amy Callahan, followed by Ed Miller.
Just the two now?
Who is the person that pulled out?
The candidate that voluntarily withdrew their application was Bill Jordan.
So, we're just going to wait now till 10 after 6:00? Talk amongst yourselves.
As, as soon as we see Amy log on, we will ask, we'll get her promoted in to be a panelist. We do have Ed Miller in the audience, who we might respectfully request, if he's listening, that he log off until 6:30 so that he doesn't have advance listening on the questions, as Amy will not have advance listening on the questions. And if that's a different Ed Miller, forget I said, oh, and there he goes. Okay.
Very well. Okay.
All right. So, yes, as soon as we see Amy, we will bring her in, and then we can go ahead and get started.
It looks like we have quite a bit of people joining us too today.
We do. There are 14 other attendees.
That's good to see for a planning commission interview. Maybe people will be interested in signing up for the June go around of this.
Correct. You will have two vacancies. Two regular terms will be up June 30, 2021. And we will be soliciting applications probably in early May. Okay, I see Amy Callahan. I'm going to go ahead and promote her to panelist.
And. A panelist.
Okay.
Hello, Amy.
Your picture and you're mute. And there's her face. Fabulous. Mayor, I will turn it over to you to kick off the process and take it away.
Well, welcome, Amy.
Good evening.
Good to have you with us. And as you know, this is a, a planning commission vacancy that will run from now, basically, to until June of, what, June 30th of this year. So, it's a short period of time. And so, we're going to ask you some questions and, and feel free to have, have some fun with this. I'm going to, I'll start. So, why do you want to be a planning commissioner? And what specific skills do you bring, would you bring to the planning commission?
Um, well, actually, I'm interested in all things real estate. My, my personal background and history is that I have been in real estate since I was 19 years old. And I've managed properties. I've done accounting and learned, learned all the way through the ranks into, from development to acquisition to refinance, to management, actual physical facilities, management of all things real estate for the last 25 years. And this is sort of in addition to that knowledge base. I'm incredibly familiar with real estate terms and have actually been through, on the developer's side of the planning commission meetings and city planning meetings and so forth. So, this will be kind of an interesting facet in addition to my, my resume, but also to my knowledge base. It's always helpful for a real estate professional to know and understand how these things work and, and know and understand the rules and regulations that go on with, within a city government. So, that's why I'm interested and sort of also why I feel, I, what I feel I'm bringing to the table.
Thank you, Peter.
Excellent. Amy, I'm glad you're here. And can you do me a favor and describe your understanding of the role of a planning commissioner and the city, and how it relates to these four things? The city council itself, the city staff, the public, and a developer?
Okay. So, what the job entails is, from my understanding, reviewing all of the documentation that may be prevent, presented, excuse me, by a developer or interested party, reviewing what that documentation states and what it entails, comparing it to what laws and rules and regulations are involved in that, and then making recommendations to the city council based on that review. In terms of what it means to the council, the council is an elected body, and they are representing the people that live here in this beautiful city. And so, it means that they are getting the, the value of time of an expert or, or a quasi-expert in that review. And they don't actually have to sit and do the review of, of all of that documentation, but they take the recommendations of the people that have done that review and, and make a decision based on that, based on their recommendations. In terms of what the staff sees, being a city manager, being a member of the city staff, they, those people need to make recommendations as well. And so, I view actually the city staff as more of a partner, peer, but with a little bit more expertise, I think. And in, in all things, city government related. And so, it would be sort of a partnership. And I would look to their expertise to understand a little bit more about what may be going on in the city, some history involved, that kind of thing. In terms of what the public, how the public is affected, the public would be affected in the decisions that are made by city planning and city council. That's why we vote for our city council members and why we have these elections, because the city council represents the, the body of Clayton. And so, we represent what the public wants us to do within the city and how the city want, how the public wants us to respond to developer requests and things of that nature. In terms of what the developer wants, or, excuse me, in terms of how the developer is affected by the city planning commission, not always is it a contentious relationship. In fact, I think in many cities, that can be very positive, very positive relationships. Developers typically just want to get their projects approved. And in real estate, that, once you own a property, as long as you're following the laws of the state of California, you're allowed to do what you need to do with your property. And so, and I guess local ordinances. But so, I, I guess my point with all of that is that with the developer, how we, we affect them is, is how we make decisions based on what state laws, what city laws, what county laws, what we're allowed to make decisions based on for, for the developer, or in favor or not in favor of the developer, depending upon those laws. So.
All right.
There you go.
Holly.
Hi. Hi, Amy.
Hi.
What are the most important issues facing Clayton now and in the future?
I would say we probably have a limited amount of space. We have a lot of state regulations to attempt to comply with that are going to be a challenge for the city, given that limited amount of space. I think in general, the state has a housing crisis and needs to fix that. And they need to figure out the right way to fix that and not, not necessarily the wrong way, if that makes sense. And so, I think that limited amount of space, we've got, you know, development that could potentially happen down the pipeline. We have some rural land that, you know, could be redeveloped into less rural uses, depending upon what we're allowed to do. And I think that, that, that is a unique challenge. It's a small town. It's a small town that has a very family-oriented feel and a very friendly feel. I can't, never would I have ever guessed, growing up, that I could say that I live in a town where I know the majority of the population in this town, personally. And, and that just is not who I ever thought I was. So, to, to have that kind of sense of community is, is a pretty amazing feat in my mind. So, I, I would say that just limited amount of space and, and, and still trying to keep that family feel and that, and that everybody knows their neighbor feel is going to be, it's going to be a challenge.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, you're up.
The planning commission of past years, I don't think could be controversial or subject to differing opinions. How do you approach those? And how do you form your decision?
Well, I think that's going to depend on the documentation that comes. I think it, it needs to be reviewed kind of in an all-encompassing thing. I can't make a decision now based on something that I don't know exists. So, I would, in terms of how I make decisions from an asset management standpoint, I ask questions. And I ask questions until I feel like I have gotten to the bottom of a situation. And so, there, you know, whatever plans or whatever information is given to me, I'm going to need to review that, digest it, compare it to what I know regulations are, and then be able to make decisions based on that. I, I'm very unemotional when it comes to decision-making. Part of the reason I'm in commercial real estate is that I'm not emotional about those things. I, residential makes it difficult. There tends to be an emotional component. So, I, I can make decisions with sort of a calm, cool, collected head on my shoulder.
And as a follow-up to that, I mean, oftentimes, the, the decisions that are presented, they will have a choice between two options, and the law will, or the rules or regulation or law will dictate the outcome. But I think in many cases, that's not true. In many cases, there's options. I mean, we're looking at something tonight with that's calling for a zoning change that, you know, we have some discretion. And so, I guess, when the question is, how do you make these decisions? I, I think saying that, just look at what the rules say, I, I think that's not enough. So, I'm wondering, like, is there any kind of, what type of underlying core principles do you use in making those decisions? Like, there's going to be someone that is happy or, and someone that is upset? And how do you weigh those?
Well, like I said, I actually make decisions based on asking questions. And so, typically, when you have a rule that is somewhat gray and not black and white, which makes things, I mean, black and white makes it so easy, right? You can pick one or the other, and then, and it is what it is. You either follow the rule or you don't, or you, you know, follow the rule or you don't. In a gray situation like that, I think, you know, you ask questions and you try to find what's right for the public and what's right for the city. There are a lot of things to consider and weigh. What is a better tax option? What is a better, that makes more money for the city, right? What is a better option for maybe the traffic impact for the city? What is a better option for maybe the neighbors that are involved? So, the, there are a lot of different questions and answers that can come into play there. And, and those would need to be answered as part of that. And then I would also hope that I would be able to collaborate with my fellow city planning people and actually come up with a decent decision that represents what the city is asking for.
Okay, thank you.
Hey. Councilmember Diaz?
Amy, there are undisputed shortages of housing throughout California. And the state body has stepped in and enacted a number of housing mandates and other things that they have set out to the various communities and how to be able to adjust the development in their own local communities over and above the single-family dwelling. What are your thoughts about the public policy? And how does a plenty, a Clayton planning commissioner fit into that equation?
That's a good question. My thoughts on how the state has approached the housing crisis is that I'm not personally altogether positive that they've approached it in the exact right way. The city of Clayton has a unique climate, if you will, for these types of things. I will say that we are not like any other city. I would say, actually, most cities are not like any other city. We have very little space that is still available for development. And the space that we have is already sort of thought, thoughtfully planned out. And so, I think adjustments would have to be made if, if we were to be required to fit in with the current state mandates. So, I think in terms of the current state mandates, it would depend on whether a developer wanted to try to argue and fit in with those current state mandates. And, and we'd have to literally sit and, and review that and decide on whether or not we can. I think, you know, other cities are much more capable of, they have a lot more space. They have a lot more bandwidth, if you will, to meet housing demands. And there, those would be where I would hope that the state could direct more energy. But unfortunately, the state is, has kind of come up with a one-size-fits-all, cookie-cutter-type situation. And that doesn't, doesn't necessarily work. So, I'm hoping that at some point, they're going to learn from their lessons and, and, and try to figure this out and try to allow every city to meet their mandates or meet a mandate of some kind. But as we know, government doesn't always work that way. So, I think we're just going to have to play it by ear based on what we get when we get it.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, because one of the components, and as you, you obviously recognize the fact that the state has stepped in with this quote, "one-size-fits-all" mandate. And one thing that seems to be missing in terms of what Clayton has to do, and this is a question I have, is it's supposed to be matching the development where the jobs are. And I'm sure if you've lived here for 17 years, you recognize Clayton has a very limited job component that would attract people to Clayton for jobs. Is that, would you agree with that?
Yes. Temporary jobs, maybe for a new development project? Sure. But that's temporary, right? So, that's not going to be here forever. But yeah, no, absolutely. I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Peter? So, you're going to get a packet. You're going to have to do your own research on, as a planning commissioner. But your position also requires you to listen to your fellow planning commissioners and the public. So, I guess my question for you is, do you consider yourself to be a good listener? And how would you describe your personal level of tolerance for those people who have a view which you may disagree with?
Well, so, a couple of things. One is that I have, over the years, taken several active listening courses personally, because I do find that when you're young and you're starting out in business, you talk a lot. And you talk a lot because you need to be heard. And especially as a woman in a real estate environment, you need to be heard. And so, you talk a lot. And I was told when I was in my late twenties that I needed to start listening. And so, I took some classes in active listening, and it is something that I pride myself on. I definitely have learned some tools of the trade. I take notes. I take a copious amount of notes. It's pretty sometimes sad and discouraging how much I write down. But I do that so that I can actively listen. And I do that so that I can, for lack of a better term, shut up and focus. And so, I do find that I have been much better in the last 15 years in my listening skills. But I find that listening also means you have to process and you have to ask questions. And so, I do a lot of that. I question a lot. In terms of agreeing with people that might have a differing viewpoint, or just listening to them, it definitely is a challenge. There's, there are challenges involved with that. I do recognize that. The active listening skills come into play in a big way there, because you, you have to just let them, let people go until they can't go any farther. And, and so, in terms of trying to, or trying to get them to agree, or trying to let them think that I've agreed, I think the reality is, is that we don't have to agree to get along. We just have to get along. And I'm going to follow what the public needs, what the public is electing you as the city council for, more than I'm going to, you know, focus on an individual that has a disagreement.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Holly?
Thanks. Amy, as a planning commissioner, there's a lot of time involved. So, it's a huge time commitment. You're going to have meetings every other Tuesday evening. And you're going to receive a large packet of materials that can be lengthy. These duties are estimated to take approximately 10 to 20 hours per month. In addition to reviewing the packet in the Tuesday night meetings, will you be able to commit to participating on additional planning commission and/or council sub?
I'm sorry, council subcommittees? Is that what you said?
Yes. It, yes, additional planning commission and/or council subcommittees.
Yeah. I can commit to that. My kids are older. So, I'm not, I'm not in, in as high demand as I used to be.
Okay.
All right. Jeff?
What's your vision for Clayton in 10 years? You mentioned in one of your question responses earlier about, you know, developing some rural areas into less rural uses. Do you have a vision for Clayton in 10 years? Like, do you want to see more development, less development?
Um, no, I don't know that I want to see more development. I, I don't know that I want to see less development. I think I want Clayton to meet the requirements that Clayton is, is, is demanded to meet. I want Clayton to continue to produce a, an adequate amount of funds, tax funds, to continue to fund its police force and its city staff and, and to continue to provide the services that the city, you know, provides. If that means some growth, then that means some growth. You know, people own real estate, and people want to redevelop and develop real estate. It is what it is. I think that's going to take review when, when and if the time comes. But for me to say that I want to, you know, have certain parcels be developed or not developed, I, I couldn't tell you that right now. I think it would have to, to be something that I reviewed at the time. And in terms of what we have right now, our downtown, I love the acquaintance that it is. I, I absolutely love how, how it's laid out and how it's set up. I do think we need to find some more commercial tenants, some more, I need think we need to fill some vacancies that are down there before we continue to add to that. I love the, the, the events that we put on every year, twice a year or more. And, and I, I love the way that we use our, our land when we do that. So, you know, do I see a higher or better use right now? No. But has something been proposed that's a higher or better use? I don't know. I haven't seen anything yet that, that I've necessarily agreed with. So, and, and again, I'm not on the planning commission. I haven't been on the planning commission. I haven't read all the documentation. I haven't seen all the packets yet. But I would assume that when I did, I could review all of that at that time and make decisions that are based on highest and best use for the properties. But I would assume that when I did, I could review all of that at that time and make decisions that are based on highest and best use for the properties.
Thank you.
All right, Jim.
Here's your development, and I noticed in your background, you are a commercial realtor. How would you handle that? And this is not one of our standard questions, but how would you balance that requirement of developing commercially with your career? Cause anything you would be directly involved in has to be publicly disclosed. Are you, are you aware of that?
I am, and I'm not actually a commercial realtor. I'm a commercial broker. I'm a licensed commercial broker. I don't do business in the city of Clayton at all.
Okay.
Nor does my company.
Right, okay, good. That's a good, good answer to that. But back to the party questions that we have. How would you balance private property rights with the civic needs?
How would I balance private property rights with civic needs?
For example, you know, the, the owner of the property may wish to develop it in a certain way, yet it may not fit into the community plan or the community needs. So you're gonna, at some point, may get a proposal or a development project that the city may have one view as to the way it should develop versus what the owner of the property wishes to do with that property.
Well, I think the city has zoning regulations that the city, that you would have to follow as a planning commissioner first and foremost. From there, you know, working with the developer to re, retool their plans in order to meet that zoning regulation is, is another option. But I mean, the city has a, has a plan and has, they have to stick to it, so.
Unless you change the plan, correct?
Unless you change the plan, and, but that's not, that's, you know, something that is done as a team, right? I mean, it's, it's not, it's not like it's any one city planner, planning commissioner that gets to make that decision. It's, it's a team effort and it's certainly a team effort with city councils as well.
Hey, one thing I noticed on your application, where did you graduate with your bachelor of science?
University of Phoenix.
Very good. Thank you.
So, do you have any questions for us before we wrap this up?
Not that I can think of it this time. I do not.
Well, we thank you for your time and we're going to be deliberating here in just a little while. So again, thank you so much for stepping up and doing this.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, Amy, we will move you back to attendee. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the, as much of this meeting as you wish to stay for or not. I leave that up to you, but I am gonna move you over and our next candidate should be in momentarily. I saw him pop in and pop out, so. Yeah, he's being, he's being very polite, which is great. So I'm just gonna move you over, Amy, and you will be able to stay on as, obviously as long as you wish, so.
Sounds good. Thank you, Rena.
Thank you.
Janet could text him and let him know it's safe to come in.
Exactly.
Well, we got that done in almost the right time.
Right, right. So momentarily, I'm, I'm hoping that Janet has been in touch and Ed is popping in periodically, so you should have a moment. There he is. I'm going to move him over.
Excuse me.
And there he is. You are welcome. Can turn on his video and then unmute himself. There we go and take it away.
You look like you're in a control tower somewhere.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for my food to be delivered.
Well, how you doing? Thanks for, thanks for coming in, Ed. We appreciate this and we're all gonna ask you a few questions here. I'll start real quickly.
Absolutely.
Why do you wanna be a planning commissioner? And also what specific skills would you bring to the planning commission?
Well, I was told that there'd be free tacos here, but that looks like.
There are.
Not shaping up to happen. So, so let's move on to, I guess, my other reasons. You know, my, my reasons for joining are, are, I think, those that are heartfelt by many of the members of the community, just wanting to, to give back. And, and also feeling, when these important decisions are being made, that, that our voice and maybe our logic skills could bring something to that conversation. And especially in my case, I feel like one of my tenants is to bring some peace to the conversation. And these have been conversations in the past that have been excitable. And so I'm not sure I have your disarming wit. Sometimes CW say something humorous that just breaks the tension. But, but I do believe that I have a tendency to listen to all voices, whether I agree with them or not, to make sure, I mean, that's, that's the beginning of, of keeping things calm. Is everyone needs to feel like their concerns or their perspective has been heard. Going to the question of what, what skill other than that maybe that I might bring. You know, I have served now for a little over a year as a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee on the CCTA. So there's some familiarity with, I guess, some of the rules and regulations and whatnot that, that these public bodies must abide by and just sort of the way that, that these things flow. So, and by the way, I should mention, I was recently elected the chairperson of that committee as well. So I think there's mutual respect and people have appreciated the way that I've facilitated or contributed there. That's, that I thought was probably a cogent data point for that.
Thank you.
So what I'm trying to get is your understanding of the role of a planning commissioner in the city of Clayton? And specifically, how does that role relate to the city council, the city staff, the public and the developer?
Wow, that is a great question. So now the city planning commission does things that are both proactive from planning standpoint and also reactive, right? So from a, a good example of the, the proactive pieces are, you know, we're getting near the end of our, the Rena cycle. You know, twenty twenty-three is the end of this Rena cycle. So as the allocations are handed out to the region and then the subregions, the suballocations, then eventually a number lands on this council and, and, and the council has to figure out a way to zone things in such a way that if someone chose to try and develop this many units, there would be at least that many units available, you know, of development space. Although that's really been upended, of course, by the legislation in the last few years because you can, you can upzone or whatever, wherever you want, but that doesn't, as we saw with the Olivia project, that doesn't predict very well where the developer is going to, the actual number the developer might throw at you or the area that they might throw it at. So, so the proactive part is, is stuff like the Rena, you know, and, and the reactive stuff is obviously developers come and put proposals before the committee. And it's, I, I, I see it as the, the commission's duty to help the developers understand, well, to evaluate their, to evaluate their proposal and to then comment on areas that might need remediation or adjustment and whatnot. But I, I have seen that even handled in a proactive way in a sense of sometimes when a an unwelcome development is headed into the community, some persons either on city council or the planning commission have taken upon themselves to work to try and see if there's something a little bit more palatable that could be mutually agreed upon. A good example being like the Lafayette situation where they, they had talked them out of a three hundred, three hundred plus unit development down to, oh, well, they were gonna do, you know, forty or fifty. So I do believe even in the reactive opportunities, there are proactive opportunities to work together and, and help them choose something that will, that will suit them well and also suit the community well. With respect to the city council and this, and the public in general. So the planning commission evaluates, tries to steer things in the best direction possible and then tenders information for approval or disapproval by the city council. So we're sort of like, we're the fact finders, or I say we, that, that commission is, that's fact finders and they're, and they're people who steer the process in a positive direction. But ultimately, the city council will make the, the final decisions. With respect to the public, you know, I guess in my mind, the, the best role that this commission has is to make sure that they engage as much of the public as possible to, to make that they're, make them interested in coming to hear what is being heard. Because the last thing you want is just everybody showing up at a city council meeting right before something is about to be approved because they just heard about it and they're very upset about it, right? That's, that's the last thing that we want. But also I think, I think I would say that the commission has a duty to help get factual information out into the community without choosing necessarily a, a, a point of advocacy. So the commission's job is to make sure that information flows correctly and accurately in and out of a meeting. And, and, and like I said, to help steward the process for the developers and make sure that we're all working toward the same goal. Sorry, that was long-winded. Very luck gracious.
Holly.
Hi, Ed. What are, what are the most important issues facing our town now and in the future?
Well, I mean, there are certainly some things that fall into the urgent and important category, right? I mean, urgent and important would be the Rena process, although if I'm looking at the timeline right, it looks like for the tenure of this particular appointment through June, really the only, the only aspects of the Rena process that are, that are coming up are, are related to as sort of like the, the appeals process, appealing numbers and, and stuff like that, appealing allocations to the subregion or something. But a, and so there, and so that's, that's urgent and important because by the end of the year, we're gonna have a number and have to do something with it. But there is a lot of city angst over the downtown property and, and the city council's been taking proactive steps to engage facilitators and so forth to, to design a process that will bring in voices and, and get them heard. Undoubtedly, the commission will be involved in evaluating any proposals that, that do evolve from that. But you know, that, that one falls into the important but not urgent category. But there's so much angst around it that it's just, it's, it's kinda, it's one of the six hundred pound gorillas in the, in the room. Beyond that, I mean, I'm sitting on the CCTA subboard, one of the subboards and stuff like that. I do feel like there's going to be a tremendous amount of change that is coming because of, you know, social dynamics changing after the pandemic. Communication, I mean, transportation patterns may change. Frankly, population numbers may change. We could be looking at problems from taxes because of egress. I, I don't think that's the case. I think mostly it's backfill as people leave. People who are further out are taking the opportunity to get in closer. But, uh, but it's really kinda hard to predict exactly what the dynamics of that will be. And so I, I could see some additional urgent or important things coming from that to deal with. I do hope that someone will put a voice to these, to the egress that's happening in the state. And somehow, it seems too late in the Rena cycle to factor that in. But, but some of these allocations might not be right allocations based on, on, on population dynamics after the pandemic. Thank you for that opportunity.
Jeff.
So the planning commission at times hears items that can be controversial or subject to differing opinions. How do you approach those matters and how do you form your decision? And I, I'm actually interested in your experience as the, your HOA president. And, you know, I'm sure matters came before you in that capacity. So I'd like to know how that informs your decision making going forward.
No, that's great. Actually, I can remember, I can remember the most volatile situation that came up during the HOA board meeting ever. And I don't think I actually responded terribly positively to it, but to my credit, I think I was sixteen years younger than I am right now. So I, I, I would say that I look back on that and it's instructed to me. Someone was basically saying, come, come, come redo our landscaping for, for our court or we're gonna sue you. And I said, well, I mean, I said, fine, you're gonna be suing yourself, you know, and it's gonna cause your assessments to go up. I don't know. I was, I, 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 I wasn't hostile to that person. But, but I felt like I only added to the adversarial environment. And, and since then, I would say that I would say that my perspective, as I've mellowed, of course, over the years, my perspective has been shaped by this, this thought. You know, seek first to understand, then be understood, right? And this was just one of the seven habits. But if you really, if you really take that into a meeting, what it means is, yes, you've got something on your mind or someone's saying something. You've got something boiling in the back of your mind, like you wanna respond to that point, you wanna contribute or whatever. But in these adversarial situations, it's just so, so very important to, to listen. And even if the words are being delivered in a stern, combative way, it's important to try and listen beyond those words and see what the real concern is behind there. Cause if you can, if you can just get that out of what they're saying and attempt to work to alleviate that concern through your, through your service, you know, on, on the commission, if they're concerned about parking or whatever. They may be not communicating in a very constructive way, but that doesn't mean that you can't hear it and walk away with something that's actionable and whatnot. There are limits to that, of course. I mean, shouldn't be, it shouldn't be sitting there sort of allowing yourself to be bathed in expletives. But, 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 but people come to these meetings sometimes with passion. We've certainly seen that.
Thank you.
Jim.
Ed, there seems to be a shortage of housing throughout the state. And as a result of that, the California legislature has enacted some laws, various kinds of laws aimed at mandating that local communities plan for and accept a variety of housing, housing types. In particular, they're, they're looking beyond the, the single family dwelling. And as such, what are your thoughts on how Clayton and the planning commission fits into that equation to address, one, the state mandates for more, more housing? But then how do you do it in a sense where it's compatible and so forth with, with what the general population wants in Clayton?
Absolutely. Yeah, well, and of course, I'm speaking to you from an area that is zoned, high density multifamily housing. So there you go. I'm, I'm in Dana Ridge. So we're in one of your high, high density zoned areas. I live in a patio home here. Gosh, with your permission, I'd like to take that in two pieces. So one is the, the practical piece, which is, yeah, the state's, the state shoving housing down our throat, right? And, and there is a, there is a legitimate reason for that, I, I, I understand, but taking away there is a legitimate reason for that, I I understand, but taking away the local control is also sort of removing local knowledge from the process and and I I don't think it's, I don't think it's constructive. But but, you know, the governor is trying to break what has been probably 30 or 40 years of of what's the word I'm looking for? A logjam of just, you know, litigation back and forth that prevents housing from being built. And now we end up in a very dire situation. So that's that's his prescription. So the the practical way is, you know, you have to, you have to deal with it both both tactically and strategically, right? The tactical is you have to comply with the law, so you but you can do so in a way that that you feel still breast preserves the character of the community or serves the community. An example of that would be, you know, if we have to look at, you know, under you underdeveloped lots or whatnot. Well, let me, let me, let me start with this. Like, if we have some high density stuff that's close to downtown Clayton, but hey, we've only got Marsh Creek and and a couple of little little roads around it, it might be better to set up site specific plan for that to, I don't know, lower, lower the maximum height of the buildings below the 35 feet so that you don't get these three story developments close to the downtown. But on the other hand, that Rena is going to or SS SB 3035 or something is going to require us to upsize something else, right? Well, maybe that that's something else could be closer to Kirk or Pass or, I mean, something that has a little bit better access to you know, road access and stuff, so we don't clog things up here downtown. So I'm not saying that there's no creativity at all, looking at the general plan to try and cope with the numbers that they're throwing. That's your tactical thing. You got, you got to work with the situation that's being handed to you. But strategically, something, some sort of advocacy, not come from the planning commission, unfortunately, of course, seven P more A bag or city governments, something stepping up and talking with Sacramento, something strategically is going to have to be done to convince our state senators and the governor that there's a better way. And and to that point, I I guess I would just say popular or not, my my perspective is there's a little bit of a housing crisis in California. There is a housing crisis in California, but but the real crisis actually has been sort of like the buildup of massive commercial density in the, you know, Santa Clara, Santa Clara and San Francisco corridors. And if if I were voted governor tomorrow, which I won't be, of course, but if I were, I would be using the same sort of far reaching power to freeze all commercial develop in Santa Clara and San Francisco, there is no expansion. And then I would freeze housing development in the East Bay. I want to see jobs.
In the East Bay, in the
In the East Bay, and the North Bay, because really what what needs to be built out here is is satellite job sites for your Siscos, your Apples, you know, out in the Antioch Brentwood Tracy, up in the Roner Park, those kinds of areas. All these guys that are putting all these vehicle miles driven on on our highways and causing us to have to build, you know, very expensive transportation projects, and they're talking about another billion dollars of, you know, not several billion dollars to build another span across the bay. All that would just go away if we just relocated some additional business sites out here where people actually live, right? It would be a big win, I think, for for everyone. You'd have, you'd have less tired employees for the companies and you'd have less demand on the transportation systems. And these little communities will just flourish, that build up with these new satellite offices needing cafes and 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 all kinds of services to take care of them. But that's not something I shape working on this committee, but that's just, I'm telling you, that's my my 10,000, my 30,000 foot in the sky
Yeah.
view of 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 what's going on.
Yeah, just to follow up, I mean, it sounds like you favor the local control aspect of it as of it as it being mandated one size fits all that. I think you've clarified it very well in terms of matching the jobs with where the where the where the housing is. But thank you, Ed. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Peter.
So I'm just gonna just check on time. We got five minutes until the meeting starts and I think my my next question is was answered really well in his first question, but I'm gonna, if you can keep this short and to the point, Ed. You know what, you you you're gonna get a big package and you're gonna get in front of the planning commission. I you already said you think you're a good listener, but how do you, what's your tolerance level for people you disagree with?
Um. It varies, of course. How much sleep have I had that night? How many, how many jolts have I drank? No, I I don't drink jolt. I'm just kidding. No, the 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 short version is it does vary, but I think especially coming into a a situation like this, the planning commission, which I've not served on before. I will definitely, and one of my things as a software developer or database database developer is I always say, don't try and automate a process or fix a process that you don't understand yet. And a lot of people jump in trying to change things. I think I'm going to be doing a lot of listening and and I will not be quick to jump in and say, hey, you're wrong, or let me correct you. Let me. I won't speak in any kind of, you know, ministerial way to to people, because frankly, I would be lying if I didn't say I too will be learning. And so I think I think I'll be well best served asking questions a lot more than weighing in.
Thank you. Ali.
And Ed, given the time that you need to a lot to be reviewing the packages, as Peter just mentioned, and the every other Tuesday meetings, what is your commitment, your time commitment look like in regards to not only attending those meetings, but participating in additional planning commission and or council subcommittees?
I am available for all all Tuesday meetings for sure, definitely. And then, of course, there's a lot of work that goes behind the the sides on that. Without knowing specifically what all this up, you know, committee work might look like, I I I I still would say I I have capacity in my schedule to to deal with these things, and I would meet them with some enthusiasm. So I mean, this is all very interesting to me. My energy would would go in that direction for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff. Yep.
Oh, there we go.
Hey, sorry, I was on mute. What's your vision for Clayton in 10 years? Like, how do you see everything coming down? What would you like to see?
Wow. You know, it, that's an interesting question, because I mean, Clayton's so built out already. Even if I, I mean, I would love, probably is not going to be realistic, but in a way, I would love to see. We we have these wonderful like restaurants and 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 services downtown. But, you know, during the day, it's it's a little dead. It would be kind of neat if there were, if there was something that was providing a bit of focus and bustle during the day where, you know, some sort of office ish kind of or retailish kind of work or or whatever, that was bringing some people in so that there'd be so a little bit more of a feeling of people on the street and 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 a little bit of bustle. But, you know, not a lot of room to build in anything around there, and we don't want to change the character of the place all that much. I'm just saying, you know, lots of people out and 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 feeling some energy there. That would be nice. Realistically, I I think people would like it to sort of just stay the same, and there's nothing wrong with that either.
And Jim.
Yeah. And finally, for me, one of the things that you're going to be faced with is balancing private property rights versus city needs or civic needs. How do you, how do you balance that in your mind?
Boy, um, gosh, and this is like, you know, one of the things, I I mean, this may not be the example that you're thinking of, but one of the, one of the things that comes to mind for me is the is the whole, the downtown parcel, right? I mean, because the city, if it was acting strictly in its own interests, really would like to see a revenue generator there, right? Because I mean, we just, we don't have, we we don't, we're we're built out. We don't have a lot of tax base. And so the city definitely has, I mean, an interest in in having, you know, its coffers filled a little bit better, but that that may not be, that may not match the interests of of the community. I I think you're talking more along the situations like the Olivia project or things like that where let's say Sino wanted to build in a a a set of homes in a certain area, and then he has a private interest or his company has a private interest in that. But it might be destructive or disruptive to the community. And I would just, I would say very quickly that it's best to try and ask questions to get the developer and the commission as quickly to the point of discovering where there are at least points of common wins, where there where there is something of value that we can both work towards. It may shape the developer's idea or concept in a in a positive way. They may, they may make alterations that fit a little bit better for us outside of a courtroom, which would be delightful. But it is, it is hard. Jim, I think every situation's different, regrettably, and I don't, I don't, I don't believe that I personally have a panacea for everything. The best thing is just get everyone talking and and see how fungible both sides can be to get to the best, the best result for the community.
Right. By the way, I noticed on your application, your undergraduate degree is from Eastern New Mexico. Did you get this? Did you spend much time there? Are you from there?
I am. In fact, although I was appointed to the Air Force Academy, I turned out to be colorblind. Who wants to be, you know, who wants to go to the Air Force Academy if you're not going to fly a jet, right?
Right.
So I was appointed to the Air Force Academy, but once I found out from the medical that I was not going to qualify for a pilot school, I declined the appointment and I went to the homes, the school in my hometown. I was also a National American Scholar, but I ended up at this little state university, right?
Excellent.
It was
Thank you. Thank you for filling that in.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to wrap this up. Do you have any questions for us?
No, no, I feel I I will just say this one thing. It looks like if the other candidate is Amy Callahan, there's no way the city can go wrong. We've got a good, good set of people out there. We have an incredibly engaged community and there's a lot of talented, compassionate and and educated people out there. And I would look forward to working with anyone if given the opportunity. I appreciate very much the time that you guys have given me tonight.
Thank you for coming in and stepping up. We really appreciate it.
You bet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Raina, back to you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, that completes your item of two A. I would recommend that you continue through to to B. Ask if there's any public comments on to be deliberate and make your appointment and then we can take a micro recess and start the 7:00 PM meeting and just kind of push through that way. That would be my recommendation. And
That's what we'll do then. We'll stay on this and move to back to council for item to be or not to be. So anyway, council discussion.
Who wants to want to ask if there's any public comment? That's all.
Okay, let's have public public comment before the bring it back to council. Janet, do we have anybody with their hand up?
I do have one person with his hand up. That's Howard Geller, and I will go ahead and promote him.
Howard, you're on mute.
Gotcha.
There you are.
Is that better? Well, thank the city council for all their efforts in interviewing.
I don't know if you can hear Howard.
No, I can't, I can't hear him in the background.
Let me get you up better here with better volume. Is that better?
Slightly. Yep.
All the volume I got, guys, I'm sorry. I just thank you for your time. Can I ask, how many positions are there? I I came in about a couple of minutes late. Was there one position or two positions?
Just one, one until June of this year, the end of June this year. Filling in for the seat that was vacant vacated by Peter when he got elected.
Gotcha, gotcha. Well, you know, I've I've been on the council eight years in the past and mayor twice. I want to say that the two candidates that you just interviewed seem to be about the most qualified candidates that I've ever I've ever heard interviewed. They had great answers to all your questions, and they seem to have some good history to do the job well. So I think you you got some good candidates. And I would definitely take the one that you didn't select in case you needed somebody else and go right back there. That's good candidates and a comment.
Thank you. And we certainly would encourage whoever doesn't get on to come back in June when we have openings again. Anybody else, Janet?
Mayor Wolf, I do not have any other hands raised.
Okay, then we'll close that public comment and bring it back to council. Now we can discuss amongst ourselves. So anybody want to start that off?
I think we we were presented with two qualified candidates. I'm looking back at my notes and both were very thoughtful in their answers and consideration, by the way, of their answers. And obviously, being presented with these questions in a very quick fashion and having not heard them in advance, they gave very responsive and thoughtful answers, which I I thought was very, very well done by both, by both of them. In particular, Amy, I thought she emphasized the fact that if on the appointed to the commission, she would ask good questions, ask a lot of questions, and I think that's important. And I think that she would really delve into the materials as presented to her. But one thing I I thought about with Ed, he too is very thoughtful and very open and a good listener. I could see him really pondering these questions and I was watching him closely in in both cases. And he had some very good points, very practical solutions on how to address something. And one that I was particularly thought was important for him to suggest is the idea of local control and how to how to make sure we maintain that and try to develop what we have under the direction of the people that are in this town appointed or elected to to do so. So and one thing I really appreciate about his application, it was typed. Thank you.
I I just knew you were going to get into that.
It's 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 a way to be able to read it much clearer.
I know, I know. Anybody else? Well, I I have, oh, sorry, go ahead, Peter, go.
No, I I just want to say I was delighted to hear both candidates and their answers. I've been fortunate to meet both candidates historically and know them on the street, although I don't have a personal relationship with them. And to hear the depth of their passion, knowledge and desire to serve our our town was refreshing. I was very excited to to have people want to step up and give back to our city. So I want to thank both Ed and Amy for for doing so. That was, that was awesome. I would acknowledge that Ed seemed to have a larger picture of what was going on from a Rena state A bag standpoint and all is not a prerequisite of the job, but it's what is going to be hitting the the planning commission and us in the next two or three years. So that was a just something I observed. just something I observed and it wasn't that Amy is not capable of getting having that because she clearly has the ability to get into that as well. But that was just the small, small observation I made during the interview process.
Yeah, I would agree with that assessment. I, both of them were very passionate about living here in the town, keeping the small community feel, et cetera, and and really how limited we are on the space that we have. I did like that Ed has the experience working with other agencies that are not necessarily here in town and how all of that works together in conjunction with local government. But I also did like Amy's responses to how she can actually see the bigger picture with working with developers, even though she isn't the one who is doing the commercial development. She's actually the broker. I liked having her expertise and knowing the types of questions she should possibly need to ask or also being involved in digging deeper to make sure that she gets the answers that she needs for the community. So I I don't think that we can go wrong, as Howard said, with either of these candidates. I'm pleased that both of them did apply. I was quite surprised to see Ed. I've known him not personally, but Matt used to coach his daughter years ago. And so when I heard the name, I was like, I wonder if that is him. I'm not sure. And then it was I was pleased to see his face and Amy and I go way back to our kids being at kinder care together. So I've known them both for many years and they're both great people.
Great. Jeff, anything?
I would just say thank you to both the candidates. I think, you know, it takes a lot to step up, so. And they really don't know how much work they're getting into.
Well, and it's a short term. At least this first one. So I agree with everybody. We can't go wrong here. So why don't we? Why don't we discuss who we should choose at this point? I think we're all in agreement that whoever doesn't get in at this point should come back and and try again in June. I would certainly urge that person to do that. But let's talk about who we want to, we want to put in that in that seat.
Well, I'll I'll be happy to break the ice on that. And having listened intently to both of them, and again, we couldn't go wrong either with either person. But I would say at this point for me, when Ed mentioned the knowledge of development versus job placements and so forth on where that fits into the bigger scheme of how we are going to be faced with impositions, if you will, from the state. I believe he could do an excellent job in listening on those, on those subjects and could give a very thoughtful and very knowledgeable, knowledgeable position to take. And as a result, my my support at this point would be to see Ed Miller take that spot on the planning commission.
Thanks, Jim. Anybody? Anybody else?
Was that a motion, Councilmember Diaz?
Well, if nobody's going to speak up, then I will make it a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Okay, that was a tie. I think Holly edged him out just slightly. So second by a gentleman. Okay, so Janet. Would you please call the vote?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Yes.
Number one?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cloven?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a unanimous vote and Ed, welcome to the planning commission. And Amy, again, we hope you will come back in June and give them some of the shot. We have, do we need a short, Raina? I'm sorry, Raina, you're speaking.
I was just going to recommend that you take maybe a five minute recess and
Back to our regular meeting.
Start your
I want to change access because I'm not be, I don't have full functionality on this one. So I'm going to be offline for a few minutes.
But we say just twenty after after seven, we'll come back.
Great.
All right, so during this one. Okay, thank you. All right, so looks like we're all here, Janet, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll. Although we better get the video first. We got to get the video. Let's do that.
Due to COVID-19, this meeting will be conducted as a Zoom webinar pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 2920, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is being webcast on the City of Clayton's website. The mayor will call upon its council, presenters, staff and other speakers by name and ask that they speak clearly and state their name before giving comments or remarks. Persons participating via webcast and Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial star nine and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Telephone attendees will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their name, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by Clayton City Clerk by 5:00 PM today will be entered into the record, but will not be read out loud. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they are free to do so and should raise their hand and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. The chat feature is not active. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date.
Okay. Thank you. And Janet, if you will now call roll.
Sure, Councilmember Diaz?
Present.
Councilmember Tillman?
Here.
Councilmember Juan? Councilmember Juan?
I'm muted. I'm here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cloven?
I'm here.
And Mayor Wolf?
I'm here too, and we're all present. That's great. All right, thank you. Now we're going to go to the Pledge of Allegiance and ask Councilmember Diaz to do that for us, please.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Now, we're going to go to the consent calendar now and but Raina, there were a couple of changes and you wanted to make note of those before we take a look at the consent calendar.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On consent calendar, item five A, these are the minutes from the regular meeting of January 19th, not January 5th, as it states in the agenda. And also a clarification on your comment, Mr. Mayor, from the last meeting that you appreciated but did not participate in the removal of the decorations, but also thanked the Boy Scout troop for the Christmas tree cleanup. So with those corrections that we will include in the minutes, you are, you have all of the corrections needed for the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go to the public now before we take a motion on this. Do we have anybody who wants to speak to the consent calendar in the public, Janet? If you do, please.
Mayor Wolf, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, then we'll close that out and come back to the council for a motion to approve the consent calendar unless somebody has something to pull.
Move, Jim.
I move it.
Okay. I think that Peter got the the motion in, seconded by Councilmember Juan. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to go to recognitions and presentations. We don't have any today.
You need to take a vote.
I'm sorry, did we not vote? No, we didn't vote. Thank you, Janet.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
Bye.
Vice Mayor Cloven?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes, okay. Now we'll go to reports. Planning Commission, I believe that Chairperson Chipro is going to be giving that report today from the Planning Commission. Am I right? Oh, there he is. There's the family.
I'll start. There we go. The family's cuter. And hello, Honorable Councilmembers and city staff. The Planning Commission, we met on January 26th and we had two action items. The first being, we approved the Rory Richmond Memorial Garden for downtown. It's a very touching tribute to a person who did a lot in this community. I mean, I don't think 10 people could replace the energy and enthusiasm Rory brought to our town. So he loved his succulents. We will have a lot of his succulents in in that garden. And it's it's going to fit in really well. So I was happy that we unanimously approved that. And the other action item was the Housing Accountability Act discussion that Vice Chair Denzil wanted. And so we talked about that. I know you have a large agenda tonight, so I'm not going to carry on much longer other than when does the planning commission get our intro video? That would be nice.
You and I can, you and I can produce it.
I was going to say.
First, you got to make your bed.
You you, well, those are the pillows. I want your voice. And and one other thing, thank you to Amy and Ed for applying. You both were great candidates. Ed, welcome aboard. I look forward to working with you. Hopefully next Tuesday, we could use the extra body. And then Amy, please do come back in June and reapply again. City needs people like you. So thank you. Have a good night. Don't stay up too late there.
Thank you, Chairperson Chipro. And don't forget to plant some kale for Rory as well.
All right, we'll do that. So.
Known for kale. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Here's a surprise. There was no Trails and Landscape Committee meeting. And now we're going to go to City Manager and Staff Reports, please.
Nothing in particular actually for me this week, although I will say, and perhaps I'm stealing the vice mayor's thunder, but we will have a Trails and Landscape Committee meeting next week. And on track to try to bring that together before our mid-year budget so that we can include that information. So we are making progress on that front. And with that, I will just move us along since we do have a longer agenda.
You know, we'll try to get through our city reports, city council reports now. Jeff, you have anything?
Holly and I met with, as the Audit Committee, with the auditors that we'll talk about later, and then mostly just mostly emails and phone calls.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. I've had a number of meetings, both in person and starting on January 25th and over the phone and via web and other means with the Keylock Community Group up there. That group is developing and coalescing and coming together. They are, interestingly enough, gathering some leadership and much like that took place down at Regency and are coming up with a various list, which we will address on this Thursday at the next Public Safety committee meeting with that leadership group in particular to try coming in focusing on what what best works at the short term, midterm and long term. Had a meeting also after that with the Chief of Police discussing further those issues. We did again have a group on the 27th of the meeting of the just the Public Safety Committee itself with the City Manager and the Chief to discuss more issues on Keylock Way and Kettle Ridge. On the 28th, attended the East Bay Division League of California Cities Meeting, followed immediately by the Clayton Business and Community Association General Membership meeting under the new leadership of John Ruby Ellis Jr., the new president. And then today had meetings following up with the City Manager and the Chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly?
Okay, I'll try to make this brief, but it was a lot. Immediately after our last meeting, I had a conversation from another police officer from a neighboring city to give us some ideas on what to do on Keylock Way and the issue up there, which I shared with the Chief and City Manager and Councilmember Diaz. On the 20th, I had my meeting with the Clayton Libraryary Foundation. I shared their concerns with some lighting issues that I've asked Raina to provide to maintenance. So she's taking care of that. On the 21st, 22nd, 28th and 29th of January, we had league training. Peter and I were both there as well as CW. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. On the 22nd, I also had a meeting with our regional rep, Sam Kegel. She's a representative for our region at Cal Cities. I've had several meetings with the City Manager on the 22nd and today. As Jeff mentioned, we had the Budget Audit Committee meeting on the 26th to prepare for tonight. On the 27th, we had the meeting with the the Public Safety Committee ad hoc group. On the 27th, that evening, I also had a meeting with the East Bay Youth Speaks webinar for preparation for some upcoming meetings on the 28th. I had several meetings. I went to the African American Caucus meeting. It was a meet and greet. That's part of Cal Cities. And then immediately following that, I attended the Cal Cities East Bay Division meeting where we got to hear from legislators up in Sacramento. And then during that meeting is when we got a huge call out for the community to help find a young resident who was missing. So I wanted to say thank you to our police department for their efforts in locating him very quickly and everybody in the community who stepped up to help with that search. I sent my family out to hit the streets while I was ending that East Bay call and then put the word out on the internet and it took over like wildfire. So thank you to everybody who helped with that. And then what else? That evening, I also had a call with Chief Warren just to debrief to go over some issues that I thought were happening and just ways that we can get the word out better as a town, as opposed to just individuals sending stuff out. The police did everything they were supposed to do. It was very quick, but I just wanted to know if there was a way that we can share it more widely besides Facebook and and Nextdoor. And she did share that there is a community, a countywide alert that would have gone to everybody's cell phones. That was going to be the next step that was implemented and that was something that was already in the work. So just wanted everybody to be aware of that. What else? Keylock Way residents, as Mr. Diaz, Councilmember Diaz, let you know, they are very passionate about their project. And I've had several conversations with them to be continued this Thursday when we meet with some of them to continue that conversation. And on the 31st, I visited the proposed development we're going to talk about tonight and spoke to a neighbor to hear their thoughts on the project. So I'll get to more of that later. Long winded, but there you go. It was busy.
Busy, busy.
Yeah.
Thank you, Holly. Okay, and Peter?
You know, both Jim and Holly have repeated some of the things I was involved with and Raina took my other thunder away. I do want to let the Trails and Landscape Committee know that we are going to be meeting. This is really important. This is part of something that I'm involved with and we need to get coalesced on who we are and where we fit in this community and what we're supposed to do. So that's going to be a priority this week and this coming months. Holly and I put in at least 16 hours of training and and Mayor Wolf with the league. It was valuable, awesome training online and the interaction between our peers was 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 very good to hear and be a part of. I've done about three hours of training on BBK's training online, which is a lot more dry. I really enjoyed the East Bay chapter of League of Cities and listening to Senator Glazer, Assembly Member Rebecca Bauer-Kahn, I mean, Bob Wiskowski, what a great guy. I mean, there's some some great knowledge that were our local legislators talking about broadband and housing and challenges from HCD and the Reno numbers to talking about homelessness and climate change and COVID and opening of schools. All this was in this conversation and and it is all relevant to us as a city. Um, and then, again, right after that, jumped right into the CBCA meeting, um, and caught the end of, uh, uh, AJ, um, Commissioner Chipro telling us what's going on with CBCA and some of the challenges for events in the future and trying to get numbers and how that works for us. It's, it's been great. I also met and visited the property, um, that we're talking about later on tonight, and that's important to visualize that. End of report.
Thank you, Peter. And then, uh, for me, I, um, I also, as you heard, attended the Cal Cities Academy. I had some separate conversations, uh, this week with, uh, Mayor of Walnut Creek, Mayor Wilk, and, uh, with, uh, Concord Mayor McAlligan. Very good conversations with them, two great guys. Uh, met several times with our, uh, City Manager. I met with, uh, uh, Vice Mayor Clovin with regard to the Do the Right Thing, uh, campaign, how to get, keep that going, uh, for this year, and we're gonna be talking with the two new principals of, uh, our two schools, the grade school and the middle school. Uh, also met with Laura Hoffmeister once this week. Emails with citizens, you know, the, I was also on the CBCA meeting, I gave the city report there, and during that, uh, was when the call came in that a young man was missing, and, um, I have to echo everything that Holly said. The community really came together. It was amazing. Effort, and two hours later, he was found safe and sound. Drove his family crazy, I'm sure, but, uh, at least he's safe and sound. Um, but I do wanna, um, give a shout out to our, our PD and, um, Sergeant Ania especially, uh, who kept everybody informed and moving, and of course, to the, the Sheriff's Department, got the helicopter going. Um, it was, it was quite an effort, so, uh, and then, uh, let me see if there's anything else really quick here. I think that is it for now. All right.
I add to the event of the twenty-eighth, this, uh, I hope everybody realizes it's not, and you just mentioned it, uh, Carl, on the, the Sheriff's Department and the helicopter. This is a good example, even though we have a limited police department, when an issue arises that requires, uh, intense resources, uh, it's, they're just a radio call away, and, uh, Sergeant Ania, who, uh, uh, was leading that effort that night, took that, you know, and moved ahead with it and got the appropriate resources together. So that should make our community, or at least have a better understanding that even though we, our own people, are very limited in the number of people we have on duty, when the time comes and we need the assistance and the resources, they're there.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh, that's all of our reports, and now, um, we're gonna take public comment and non-agenda items. Excuse me. We have three minutes, uh, to say your piece on anything that isn't on the agenda tonight. So Janet, uh, who do we have?
I have one hand up for Jenny Ye.
Okay, let Jenny in. There she is. You're on mute. Jenny, you're on mute. Do we need to come back to Jenny, and do we have anyone else, and then we'll come back to Jenny if we can get her to, where we can hear her?
At this time, I do not have any other hands raised. It looks like Jenny just unmuted.
Nope, there we go. Jenny?
Actually, it's not Jenny. I don't know how that got on there, but, uh, this is Michael Lewis. Uh, good evening, uh, council members, mayor, city staff. I've been a resident for over forty years in the area, born and raised. I've seen so many changes, and I was even here when they built Oakhurst, so it goes way back. Some good, some bad. Um, kinda miss the quaint Clayton area sometimes, uh, but growth has got to happen. Took the opportunity to go to, uh, Keylock Way, since all the, uh, talk about the racing up and down the street, and, uh, no racing while I was there, but, uh, wonderful view. I do see the, uh, the issues that they've got, uh, but, you know, speed bumps seem to be a, uh, a legitimate way to quell the traffic down a little bit, um, so I kinda confer with, uh, your decision on that. Just finding the funds, I guess, seems to be the, the struggle, and I guess you'll take other agendas up. Second item I'd like to bring up, uh, times are changing, and I would like to take the opportunity to, uh, request and encourage the council to add City Ordinance One Seventy, Nine Fifty, Twenty to the city for review, for the council to discuss. That's all I got.
Okay, I, I didn't know if we lost you. I'm sorry.
No, no, I was up here. I'm here.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Michael, um, do we have anyone else, Janet?
Mayor Wolf, at this time, I do not have any other hands raised.
Okay, then we'll close the, uh, public comment, and now we're going to go to, we're gonna do a little switch here. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mayor. Uh, Jenny Ye now has her hand up.
Okay, then we'll reopen, uh, public comment for Jenny. Jenny's on mute.
I'm mute, okay.
A bit of an echo there.
Well, yeah.
There you go.
Um, today, I'm going to add my comment regarding the Keylock Way. Um, like I mentioned before, I was not quite involved with the city's politics in the past, and I was very shocked that the city is so broke that you guys didn't even have ten thousand dollars to add the speed bump for those people that complained about car speeding. I serious, I seriously think something is wrong financially in Clayton. And honestly, in my eighteen years living in Clayton, Clayton has not changed at all. Look at our nearby cities, such as Simromon, Pleasanton, Dublin. They have restaurants, they have storage malls, they are thriving. And look at Clayton downtown. The majority of the buildings are empty. That's just crazy. Okay, that's not least. Like I always say, cannabis, I'm Miss Cannabis. Cannabis has been miscategorized for the last seventy years or so, and now the federal is going to legalize now. And I hope the council member can be open-minded, understand the time has changed, and you, hopefully, you will embrace the change. Cannabis is not evil. Not everybody smoke cannabis to get high. You can use cannabis to make therapeutic products, such as cannabis-infused skincare or Pan relief cream. Like this. Hope you can see it. I made this. Okay? So, the City Manager and all the council members, you receive the ordinance that I collected from the other cities. Concord, Pittsburgh, Pleasant Hill, Contra Costa, County, Monarch Creek. Everybody, all the city, their owners all can grow cannabis outdoor, as long as it's not in public or has some sort of order or anything like that, and I really hope the city will embrace the change and change the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay, uh, Janet, do we have anyone else?
I do. I have Rosie Straka, and I'll upgrade her right now.
There you go, Rosie. You're on.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, I just wanted to say that Keylock isn't the only, um, neighborhood in Clayton that has a speeding and running the stop sign problem. We don't have the parking problem, at least I don't think we do. We might a little bit on the benches down near, um, Peacock Creek, and maybe at the top by the water tower. I'm not sure. Those neighbors would have to, uh, talk to that, but I live on Inverness, and I've got, um, Pebble and Peacock on either side of me, and they're always running the stop signs there. Like, I, people like, they pretend like they don't, they're not, they don't even exist. It's just, it's insane when I, um, hear the cars just flying by and they're speeding, and so when, uh, when you guys, what I'm, would like to say is, when you guys figure out a way to, um, fix that over on Keylock, can you bring it over to Peacock Creek too? That would be great. So, and, and just for the record, I personally don't, um, agree with speed bumps, but if that's the best that they can do, then that's the best that they can do. And, uh, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. I know what you mean. I live in Peacock Creek.
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, Janet, anyone else?
Mayor Wolf, I do not have any other hands raised.
Then we're gonna close the, uh, public, uh, comment and move now to, we're gonna do a little switch up, like I was trying to say before, with regard to, uh, the mayor's prerogative. We're gonna, um, switch the action items and the public hearings around, so item ten will now be item nine. Um, given the fact that the annual financial report should be, uh, a lot faster than the, uh, public hearing, so, uh, we're gonna go to our Finance Director now and, uh, and, uh, take it away. And I think you're on mute.
I'm gonna, excuse me, I'm gonna turn this over to, um, our auditor in just a moment, Bryce Rojas and Katie Perry. Um, this is kind of, I, I don't usually, um, associate exciting with accounting and finance, maybe, um, Councilmember Juan does, but this is kind of a fun time of the year for us. Kind of doing a little bit of time traveling. We're working in the year that was, which is our audit, June thirtieth, um, twenty-twenty. We're gonna be working on the year that is, um, with our mid-year budget, in which, um, the presentation of these financial statements really start the mid-year, and then the year that's upcoming, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, which will be forthcoming here in the next couple of months, so, um, this really kicks it off. Just wanna, um, let the full council know that, um, Vice Mayor Juan and Councilmember Tillman, Katie Perry, um, Jeff, excuse me, um, Bryce Rojas and our new City Manager, Rena Schwartz, met last Tuesday to go over the audits. Um, Vice Mayor Juan, excuse me, um, Councilmember Juan, um, had a number of, um, good questions and, um, areas where, um, we made a couple of adjustments that he, he caught, which was great, and appreciate the input. But wanna assure the council that, um, the audit that, that's before you is what, what we would call a clean opinion. It's, it's an unmodified or an unqualified opinion that, that in, in parts states, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the City of Clayton, California, as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty, and respective changes in financial position, and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States, otherwise known as GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. I'm gonna turn this over to Bryce here in just one moment. What, what I really like to point out is, um, on the staff report on page two, um, really the, the focus that will, with the upcoming mid-year budget presentation and, and, um, then twenty-one, twenty-two budget is, um, how is our general fund doing? Cause that funds most of, um, the city's, um, activities. And, um, essentially, the city, um, has an actual increase of the, for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty of four hundred and four thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars, which, um, I've made an adjustment. There's a, there's a fair market value of assets. It's, it's an annual adjustment that you adjust the, your, um, investments up or down as to what their, um, fair market, market value is at the end of the year. That adjustment was a hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, so, which I believe the City Manager, um, at the upcoming mid-year budget will be recommending to, that council have a discussion as to, um, what to do with the, the remaining two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. It's actually two, two hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. Have a discussion as to, um, to put that into our new rainy day fund, which was established, um, with the twenty-twenty-one budget, and, um, in the past, council has taken the, the, the surplus from, from the most recent audit and set it aside for, um, projects and other one-time expenditures, so I'm, we're really happy to say that there's about two hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred dollars for you to, to discuss fairly soon. Um, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Bryce. Unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, well, thank you for having, uh, me and Katie Perry. I was the Audit Partner. My name is Bryce Ross. I was Audit Partner this year, and Katie acted as a manager. Um, we really enjoy working with the City of Clayton and the, the personnel there. Uh, we're excited with the Paul being there. We think he's doing a good job and continue to do a good job, uh, for you with the accounting. And, uh, I have a, a just quick presentation for you, um, just to go over the city's financial, skipped a couple pages. We did have a, as has been noted, we had a more in-depth conversation with, last week, um, but here's a brief overview of that conversation we had. As Paul was, uh, able to mention, we gave an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. And that's what you're hoping for. We were also able to issue another letter, uh, Internal Control or Financial Reporting and Compliance and Other Matters, uh, that is towards the end. Uh, I think it's the last two pages of the, um, it's towards the end of the Financial Statements, uh, report. And we're also able to issue a letter of communication with those charges governors, the council, uh, which discloses some of the sensitive estimates in our opinion and sensitive disclosures. And, uh, some noteworthy items on the city as a whole. Uh, assets are about fifty-one million, liabilities are about six million, resulting in a net position or an equity for the whole city of forty-six million, but that also includes, uh, all the property and equipment that, and the, and the debt, no debt, property and equipment that the city has. The unrestricted portion, taking out the, uh, property and equipment is about three point three million for the city. Um, but if you get more detailed on the general fund, assets are about six point six million with less than, well, about a quarter million in liabilities, resulting in a fund balance of six million dollars. Uh, that's an increase, as Paul mentioned, of four hundred and four thousand dollars. And the unassigned portion of that fund balance for the general fund is about five point six million dollars. And on the next page, we have a, just a comparison of year-to-year statement, uh, uh, sorry, is this my presenting or no?
You're not. I was just going to let you know, we can't see anything.
Okay, well, um, I'm sorry, forgive me. Uh, but there is a change, a net increase in that position from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty for both the government-wide and the general fund. Are there any questions that you have?
Should we be seeing this on the screen?
I, I thought we were, I thought I was sharing something, but I, I'm not sharing anything. So, no, you're not supposed to. Forgive me.
Is, are we just having a technical issue there, or?
Sure.
Or do we have to allow him to share his screen? There we go, something is happening.
I'm sorry.
There we go.
So here's a comparison of government-wide financial statements from year-to-year. Revenues increased, uh, so did expenses, but it resulted in a net increase to the city. City's net position. This can also be found, uh, the twenty-twenty numbers can also be found on page seventeen of the Financial Statement Report. And then moving on to the, the general fund comparison from year-to-year. Um, revenues slightly increased, expenditures decreased a little bit, but the overall, um, change in fund balance for the general fund was change in fund balance for the general fund was $404,000 increase. And unless there's, are there any questions that I could answer?
Doesn't doesn't look like anybody has any questions for Bryce.
Yeah, I don't. I don't have any questions because we went over these in pretty detail last week. So I just wanted to thank Bryce and team for the work. You know, it's it's really glamorous.
Always.
All right. Are you moving on Bryce or?
I'm done.
You're done. Paul, you want to take it back or you have any closing comments?
Um, I just Councilmember Juan, we did. There was one question and actually Raina and I had also noticed it prior and I had incorrectly answered that it was in the changes of net assets where the government government expenditures were a lot higher than the prior year. And actually, there was an adjustment that it got it got misclassified. So everything, I don't know if you noticed that. General government as originally presented was about 2.8 million. This is general government across all the funds. What did you say, Bryce? That was in depreciation that didn't get allocated properly or something like that, but we got that fixed and appreciate.
Yes, that's correct.
You don't know how satisfying that is.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your detail.
Okay.
One question. Tell me what the surplus was again.
$404,000.
Repeat, do it. What is it?
404,000.
404.
Sir.
That's an increase.
That's correct.
Of which 290,000 is the the actual, if you will, cash increase. The other is the book value of our investments and how that increased over the year. So the recommendation that will be coming to the city council for a an increase in your rainy day fund would be the 290,000 because that's actual okay, that's real money, if you will.
Yeah, right. And that's what I was looking for. Thank you very much for clarifying.
Anybody have any other questions? No, we need to take public comment on this. Waiting for Janet to tell me if we have anybody for public comment.
Mayor Mayor Wolf, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council. We need a motion then to approve the financial report.
I would move it.
So, okay, or second?
Second, Diaz.
So I think I think we we have a Councilmember Juan. I think it was. I'll go. I'll go with Diaz. How's that? All right, Janet, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Diaz?
Hi, yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Flavin?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes. Okay. All right, now we're going to go to the public hearings and we have one which is the consideration of the 18 residential lot planned development known as Diablo Meadows. And our community development director will take over here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm going to share my screen here. Have a quick presentation for you. Hopefully. There we go. So tonight, this is a public hearing for an application that's proposing a subdivision that will involve the construction of 18 single-family detached homes at market rate. The applications and resolutions before you are, we did an initial study and ended up with a mitigated negative declaration. ENV 01-20 for reference. There is a zoning map amendment and a text zoning text amendment. Z O A dash 02 dash 20. This changed, this would change the zoning from the R15 zoning district to a planned development zoning district. This also includes a vesting tentative map. It's map, it's MAP dash 01 dash 20, and it is a vesting map. So whatever we lock in tonight is locked in for the term of the vesting map itself. I'm sorry. It also includes a development plan permit, DP dash 01 dash 20 for the development plan itself. And then also a tree removal permit, so TRP dash 09 dash 20. Just for location wise, the the project is along Marsh Creek Road and it is currently vacant. And the quarry is this big area down here just for reference sake. I'll circle again. This is the existing conditions on the property. It is vacant. It is undeveloped, undisturbed. It's grassland with some with some trees. It does have a little more topography than than the pictures kind of show here. And you can see some of the outlier housing that's that's nearby. This is the project site itself. We have helped identify the development area and then the open space area for the project site itself. A per zoning map, like I said, the underlying zone currently is R15 and the proposed is planned development. This is a vesting tentative map. This is this was what would be recorded as the final map with all the conditions and fees attached to it. The development plan shows how the loss will be laid out. As you can see off to the left side of the project site is the open space area. This is where the the dry creek bed is and the topography is has some definite slope on on this side here, right next to the developmental area and on off to the left side. The preliminary landscape plan shows the landscaping around the front properties of each individual lot. Also, the landscaping around the retention basins. There is one at the front here, which is a smaller retention basin, and it would be landscaped. The the primary one is at the back of the project site over here. And it also will be landscaped. I'm sorry. There are four model types that are part of the application. As you can see, they are different from each other, but yet similar enough where they where staff feels that they fit in well with the community and the feel of the surrounding neighborhood itself. This is a one-story element. This is a two-story element. This is a one and a half story element. And then the last one is also a one-story element. This gives you a conceptual from above looking down as it's would be fully developed. As you can see, the new homes are lined along here. The open space is towards the top of the aerial here. You can see the retention basin along the street frontage here and then also at the back of the property here. This is a streetscape perspective. So as you're approaching the the new development, this is what you would be seeing. This is the landscaped area and right behind it is the retention basin. And then you see a home. You see a new street and new homes here. And this would lead you into the development itself. And with that, the planning commission did review this. I do need to make a correction to our report and I apologize. I meant to do this upfront. On your in your report on attachment C, as in Charlie, the third, fourth and fifth, whereas has the planning commission vote as 5-0, that is incorrect. The vote was 4001 vacancy. So I just want that for the record and so that you all know that it was actually four commissioners who who heard this at the public hearing. I the motion was made and voted upon with four planning commissioners and one vacancy. Staff has recommended some conditions should the council decide to approve this project. The conditions are recommended and at the council's pleasure, we would we would like those conditions added in with the approval. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but before then, if the council will indulge, I will stop sharing my screen and the applicant is is here and has a quick presentation also. See if we can get them here. Let's see, Carrie Watt from DeNova Homes.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, if if the council would like, we'd be happy to give our our presentation as well. If there's no questions for staff at this time.
Do we have any questions? Doesn't look like it. So you're on.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and share screen here. If you give me a moment. View full screen. For slideshow full screen. There we go. All right, very good. Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council. Thank you all so very much for having Carrie and I this evening. My name is Trent Sanson. Here on behalf of DeNova Homes, Carrie Watt, our Director of Entitlements is my counterpart over here at DeNova Homes on our forward planning and entitlement efforts for our new project endeavors. So I just wanted to start off with introducing ourselves a little bit. And if you're not familiar with our company, let you know a little bit about who we are. Hand it over to Carrie to talk about a lot of the thoughtful time and consideration that she has spent with the immediately surrounding neighbors and working with our design consultants and city staff on how we got to where we are today with the plan that is before you. So thank you in advance for your time and consideration this evening. A little bit about us at DeNova Homes. We are a local, private, family-owned developer and builder based not too far away over here in Concord. For a little bit of personal background, for whatever it is worth, I didn't grow up in Clayton, but my wife grew up in the town of Clayton, went to Clayton Valley High School. And actually, our first date was that over at Ed's Mudville Grill almost 10 years ago now. So definitely do feel a strong connection to Clayton. My in-laws still live over off of Pine Hollow Road. So I do feel a sense of connection, which is a very thoughtful reason why Carrie and I put so much thought into our neighborhood outreach and working with those immediately surrounding Diablo Meadows to make sure the project that we presented to the planning commission and ultimately you all here on the city council fits in with the small town character that Clayton is trying to embody and ensure fits with with the vision for the town. Back in 2004, we were the Extreme Makeover Home Edition captain for ABC and the Sears family over in nearby Martinez. ABC will say that we it took us five days to build a home, but we're very proud to to correct them every now and then and say it was four days and six hours. A team of about 2,000 volunteers and the immense amount of man-hours, people-hours put into the project. We were able to get that family in need back into their home over in Martinez. And ever since that point in time in our founding by my parents, Dave and Lori Sanson, almost 30 years ago, we've done our absolute best to live by our motto of building a better community. And that doesn't only include our commitment to quality construction and quality developments, but it's also working closely with those immediately surrounding infill properties such as the one here on Mitchell Canyon Road before you all here this evening. And then working with the surrounding community in the greater area to try to create not just a great project, but better community all around for everything we do. So with that commitment, my parents, Dave and Lori Sanson, are founders and leaders over at DeNova Homes, were inducted into the California Home Building Foundation Hall of Fame recently. We've been voted as the Bay Area Building Industry Association's Builder of the Year, have had a project in Pleasanton, recognized as Community of the Year. Have been recognized by the Builder Magazine with our Hearthstone Humanitarian Award for our commitment to nonprofit and philanthropic efforts. And with that, we've also recently formed our own not-for-profit public charity called Yellow Roof Foundation with a vision of creating 100% charitable affordable housing here in our home county of Contra Costa County, where we're currently working in the city of Pittsburgh on our first project right now as well from ground up all the way through. So a little, that's just a little bit about us in a nutshell. And then I will hand it over to Carrie to outline how we got to where we are here this evening.
Great. Thank you, Trent. DeNova Homes recognizes that Clayton is a unique community and that this is actually a very unique site. And there are a number of considering contributing factors which guided the design of the development plan and the architecture. First of course, general plan, city's general plan and density for the site zoning and its housing element, the topography and the environment and the existing neighborhood character. We started out with the general plan density. The city's housing needs and the zoning, and we had certain design goals in mind. One was to target the mid-range of the general plan density allowed. Secondly, was to implement the housing element goal of trying to get 19 to 25 units in that range onto the property that's in table H of the housing element. Provide affordable housing to meet the city's RENA goals and include affordable housing by design and to meet the general plan objectives for land use and open space. As a result, we got the density near the mid-range of the general plan at about 3.9 density units per acre, per net acre. That resulted in 18 homes. But we also needed to do a PD rezoning to allow slightly smaller lots and reduce the site setbacks to achieve that density. So therefore, that is why we were proposing the PD rezoning instead of using the R15, which really couldn't result in the sort of the number of units that the general plan indicated.
And then just adding to that as well, a main reason for the PD reason as well, in addition to trying to cluster lots is and meet the RENA objectives and the housing element for for Clayton is also because the development code also prohibits us from impacting sensitive areas and areas with extreme topography. So as you'll see, as you saw on previous maps showed by Mr. Feskey, and you'll see in our presentation as well, a large part of the PD rezon was to take a large area of what was previously thought to be developable land, clustering it towards closer to Mitchell Canyon Road, still with very in today's day and age, large, large lot size and you know, around the 7,000 square foot size range in order to avoid the seasonal wetlands that's been created from the drainage ditch or dry creek that runs from the quarry through the property and then the immense amount of topography on one side as well as it goes up into the foothills towards Mount Diablo. So trying to honor that natural terrain, cluster the lots to stay away from it so that it is preserved as open space and then also come up with a plan that fits in with the surrounding area.
Great. And this is an aerial view. This is a rendering that does show our development plan in relation to the to Mitchell Canyon Road. And we oriented the development plan right next to it. So you could actually see how our proposed development plan really does nestle into the neighborhood. And as you can see, as Trent mentioned, the rear portion of the property, it's about four acres. It's left as permanent open space. This is definitely area that will not be developed. We've preserved and stayed away from that natural drainage channel and it preserves the topography, the hillside topography. So we've moved all of the lots until 4.62 acres towards the front and flattest portion of the site. And we've clustered lots in that area. This gives you a better close-up version of our development plan. As you can see, we have one private road that comes in off Mitchell Canyon, excuse me, Mitchell Canyon Road to service all 18 lots. Again, this is a private road with streetlights. All of that will be maintained by a homeowners association and it will not be maintained by the city. The bio-retention areas up front, as Matthew Feskey pointed out earlier, lots one through six will all be one-story homes. These are agreements that we made with our neighbors. Lot seven contains a very nice, large existing oak tree that is tree number 37, which we will be preserving. The bio-retention area beyond that. And then the remaining lots through there. Thank you. As you can see, through there. Thank you. As you can see, um, in the open space, we've also tried to incorporate a potential trail that can take, um, our new residents down into the open space and around the, um, drainage area. We will be working on this in more detail to prepare final improvement plans as we go forward or hope to go forward. This plan also shows you the relationship of our proposed new homes to the homes along Harriman Court. And you can see how that we've increased the rear setbacks to make sure that we have at least an average setback of about 31 feet throughout the entire community. But we really wanted to be sensitive to our neighbors and ensure that we had a lot of rear yards space to make sure that we could still maintain our adjacent neighbors' privacy. With this colored plan, you can see the different types of lots that we have. The light yellow lots essentially contain our Plan One home. These would be our smaller lots. They average about 5,500 square feet. The one on the corner there is probably closer to about 6,300 square feet. Our average lot size is about 7,700 square feet. The orange colored lots are way in excess of that. So we wanted to point out to you that we were really thinking about how to strategize plotting our homes and the lot sizes as well. In terms of neighborhood character, we drove around Clayton and we really feel that there are, it's a strong neighborhood character in this area. Our design goal will deflect, reflect the character of the home design. Again, maintain the privacy of adjacent neighbors and create also landscape reflective of the area. So what we resulted, what we designed were single-story home designs with a maximum height of about 21 feet, 20 feet, six inches. We do have a Plan Two X, which is what we call a pop-up two-story. Uh, and that's only 24 feet in height, even though the zoning in this area allows 35 feet. And we're only using that on two lots. We have elevation styles that complement the existing home styles. Building footprints are a little bit greater than usual because we really wanted to keep that single-story home. So although we have a larger footprint, our floor area is well under the maximum allowed. We really wanted our homes to fit into the existing neighborhood. We've maximized that rear yard depth. And in order to maintain that open field, we've used a lot of natural, uh, trees throughout our landscape plan. We have a wood-like two-rail fence along Mitchell Canyon Road to reflect that historic rural feel.
And then just to piggyback on what Carrie was mentioning as it relates to the Plan Two X. Just for clarification, our initial proposal never had any true, uh, true two-story homes, if you call, uh, if you want to call it that way. Uh, the Plan Two X was a modified version of our Plan Two where it just slightly gets a taller ridge line with a pop-up in the middle. So we, we almost called it a one and a half story where it lives like a single, still looks like a single story, but functions as a two-story. Um, and the reason why we are only down to two of those now in the whole project is we wanted it to be a potential future buyer option. But after our, our extensive neighborhood outreach with the surrounding neighborhood and meeting with homeowners and, and people that are already living around the property. Uh, we, we scaled that way back to now only just two lots where that is a possibility due to the requests from neighbors we wanted to honor. And limiting just to the Plan Ones, Twos and the Threes that are true single stories. So that is why there's only two of them, uh, plotted at this point in time.
Great. And again, here's a demonstration street scene of the types of homes that we have designed. The Plan One is a, a smaller, single-story plan. The Plan Two X, as you see there, that's the one Trent was talking about. It just kind of pops up right, um, beneath the ridge line. And it still is only 24 feet in height. Plan Two C, um, the farmhouse style, uh, this is our single-story of the Plan Two and then the Plan Three, uh, which is our largest home. And again, this shows the Spanish style. So we have four floor plans, four elevation styles and three color schemes per elevation to provide a really varied street, street scene here. And as you've seen before, which Matthew showed, this is a view from Mitchell Canyon Road. So as you kind of drive down the road, you're driving westbound, this would be a, uh, your first view towards the community. And you can see that the scale of the homes really does match the community. This again is the aerial view and you can kind of see how we've really designed the site plan. So our new homes really snuggle into this neighborhood. And we feel it really matches what's already there. We did do a, quite a bit of neighborhood outreach. Uh, last year we sent an introductory letter to, uh, folks within 300-foot radius. We received some telephone calls and some emails to which we responded. And on request, we met with five property owners specifically. As you can see, we've identified them here, the Stices, the Bladders, the Calamuras, the Gerenhearts and the Harlesses. And as a result of our outreach, and we did meet with each of these folks individually. We agreed to only single-story homes on lots one through six, nine and 13. So that's no Plan Two X. We agreed to preserve certain trees and shrubs along shared property lines. We agreed to provide a sanitary sewer stub in Mitchell Canyon Road for the Stice property. We agreed to specific fencing along property lines with certain of our neighbors and, uh, at the C3 basin along Mitchell Canyon Road in response to some concerns from the Stices. And we are dedicated to continuing a dialogue with our neighbors as we proceed with this, um, project in the future, if we are so appro- approved. These agreements are reflected in the conditions of approval and they're reflected on the development plan, the tree exhibit, the improvement and utility plans, and then as you see, as also on the conditions of approval. DeNova Homes feels that we've provided a new neighborhood design, which really does complement the surrounding neighborhoods. We've met the general plan density and the housing goals to support the city and the community. We've done our best to address our neighbors' concerns and we're committed to continuing that dialogue with them. We'd also like to know that we concur with all the conditions of approval. We're very grateful for staff's guidance and support over these past months. And we sincerely appreciate the unanimous recommendation of approval by the planning commission. And tonight would be very appreciative of receiving the city council's approval as well.
So with that, we sincerely thank you all so very much for your time. And, uh, as Carrie mentioned, we do concur with all recommendations and conditions of approval presented before you all here this evening. And also we are here to answer any questions you may have, discuss any comments or, or further feedback. And then also as, as it's needed, if for some reason Carrie and I are not able to answer any of your questions, uh, our design team is, uh, waiting in the, um, uh, in the waiting room, if you will, for the Zoom call. So with that, I will stop sharing the screen and turn it back all to council and staff. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Very detailed. Uh, council, do you have any questions of staff or?
Amen. Uh, that's just, it seems to be well-planned, well-thought-out and, uh, and working with the community, not only with the city staff, but particularly the neighbors around there, I think, uh, was an important, uh, important move. And it looks like, uh, you've accomplished, uh, the goals that you set out in terms of, uh, continuing to, uh, uh, develop a, uh, area that will be compatible with, uh, that, uh, feeling that Clayton has known to, uh, really appreciate over the, over the years.
Yes, Peter.
I just wanted to, um, acknowledge the planning commission, um, and their role on December 8th of reviewing your project. I was on the, uh, call, which was about three hours, um, of intensive grilling by certain commissioners who had done a shoot load of homework. And, uh, asked you a lot of questions, uh, that answered most of mine for tonight. And, uh, just want to comment and echo Jim's comments that, um, your community outreach on this aspect, uh, has been exemplary. Um, and I think, uh, my colleague Jeff would appreciate, and I both appreciate the, the 3D renderings, uh, and the aerial views of, of development. It, it's a nice touch and it really kind of gives the flavor. Um, I also just want to make a statement that, that I think what I've learned personally from your project is that, i- i- and it's important to kind of recognize this as we get into the next RINA cycle. We have certain land in Clayton that we're going to start zoning. For whatever it is to try to meet our, 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 our needs for the, for the housing elements. But like this project was zoned, uh, for the, um, the last RINA cycle. R15, uh, with about 19 houses over the whole acreage. We quickly learned that since that, that there was plans, um, there were changes, including our sensitive land use ordinance. Um, which prohibits certain amounts of land from being used. And you guys did an exemplary job of, of adjusting that from the R15 zoning to the PD to get the density that was required by our housing elements. But again, there were two different parcels. One is essentially not developable and one is essentially was split in half that way. Um, and it's just something that we get up as both planners and, and city councilmen, as we look at future plans. Um, as future projects, there are going to be, uh, challenges with regard to uh, topography and wetlands and proximities that we, we just have to evaluate accordingly. And I really appreciate how you guys were able to overcome that and put this together.
Holly. I just have two clarifying questions, if I may, ask the developer. The first one is the Yellow Roof Foundation that you mentioned. Um, I believe you said it was your nonprofit. Um, is the, for unit number 18, the one that's going to be a rental unit, is it, you'll still own it then and rent it out? Is that the plan? I was trying to follow that logic.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You are correct.
Thank you. And then on, uh, there was a letter by the Stices, uh, that was included in the packet for the, uh, commissioners. And then we received it again today, just just an updated version. And I just wanted to clarify the, um, construction time. It looks like it's going to begin at 7:00 AM and in your documentation, it says goes from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. But they understand it to end at 3:30. Can you clarify which of those is correct?
Uh, I believe all of our discussions, and I apologize if there's been any misunderstanding, was the normal, uh, ordinance that the city has for work hours of seven to five. I think the 3:30 might be the weekends on a Saturday.
That's what we were thinking, yes.
Okay. Um, he's asked for no construction on the weekends or holidays and a 3:30 stop time on the weekday. I just wanted to point that out and just make sure that we were clarifying that and, and see where we fall.
Sure. Yeah, no, and I'd be happy to, we'd be happy to both talk with Mr. and Mrs. Stice, um, after, after the hearing this evening. Um, Monday through Friday, just from an efficiency standpoint. It, it becomes very inefficient from a start-stop with a shorter window of time. So I understand the concern of having, you know, less a shorter work window, but that just means we'll be there longer building the project should, should we be ultimately approved. So anything we can do to stay within the city's existing ordinance is, is allowed work hours would be immensely appreciated. Um, and then same as it goes for Saturdays, I would, we would strongly encourage the ability to be able to work on Saturdays. Uh, even if it might be condensed, you know, just from an efficiency standpoint. So maybe it would be eight to, eight to four on a Saturday or eight to 3:30, excuse me. So we're not starting at the, you know, normal work hours in the morning. Um, but we would still appreciate the opportunity to work on a Saturday where every day counts during a construction cycle to, to try to get in and out of everyone's hair sooner than later.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Peter, one more.
Yeah, it, it's kind of picky in question, but I'm going to ask it anyways. Um, with regard to the passive versus active open space. Um, clearly we have plenty of passive open, uh, open space in your development. Um, I, I'm seeing a change in the planning commission, um, package to this one relative to a trail system. Is that your proposed active open space? And does that meet our 10% requirement accordingly?
So, Mr. Feskey, feel free to weigh in if you feel we don't cover it. Um, but you, you are correct, Mr. Cloven. At the hearing, we didn't originally have any, uh, trails or open space on there, but after discussion with the planning commission and follow-up with city staff. Uh, Carrie and I wanted to show the conceptual trail that was on the preliminary development plan before you all here this evening. Uh, just to give us as an option to show what the active open space could be. Um, due to the nature of that area, we need to have some more follow-up with, um, uh, the, um, HCP with our biologists to make sure that there's no major negative impacts as a result of a walking trail through there. So we just wanted to show that as an alternative to meet the open space ordinance for Clayton. Whereas if for some reason throughout the process, uh, for final plan check and design for with improvement plans, it, it doesn't work. Then the fallback would be, uh, there's, I believe, a fee that the city charges if it's not. So it's, it's kind of a if then situation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor and City Council, just to kind of piggyback on that, um, the applicant and staff, um, we had been discussing it prior to planning commission also that there would have to be some sort of trail system or, uh, fee in lieu fee. Um, so the applicant was fully aware of that. Uh, one or the other, or a combination of if, if it didn't meet the, the percentage. So, um, unfortunately, by the time we got to planning commission, we didn't really have a defined trail area because we weren't quite sure where we would want to put it. So, but, um, with a little more time, um, before it could be, came before you. Um, we had some time to discuss where it would be appropriate and, um, kind of a, a, where it will be located.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I think Jeff, did I see your hand there? Yeah, Jeff.
Yep. Um, so I've had a couple of kind of disorganized questions. But, um, the parcels to the, that will remain undeveloped to the Southwest. Who, who will retain ownership of those parcels?
The Future Homeowners Association will retain title. And they'll be deed restricted as open space so that no one could come and try to buy it from the HOA down the road, if you will. Um, and then in partnership with that, the HOA, we've been talking to, uh, a couple of different land conservancies to ensure it's maintained in its perpetuity to assist with that effort. But the homeowners association will be the one that maintains title to it.
Okay. And then I'm assuming I, you know, forgive me, the document was like 800,000 pages, but, um, the, the requirements for an HOA are included in the document, I am, I am assuming.
You, yes, sir, you are correct. So yeah, we'll go through the, the California Department of Real Estate for their review and assessment project, process before an HOA is ultimately approved. And then also city staff has been very diligent in protecting the city of Clayton where in the absolute worst case scenario, Carrie and I have never experienced in our careers where an HOA has failed, but if for some reasons the world really turned and something did. Uh, then there would be a backstop with a new CFD that would be formed to maintain the property. So there's no excess funds out of the city's general fund to maintain of, of what used to be private roadway. Um, so we have the HOA with the CFD laying dormant in the backstop if the worst case were to happen.
I see. Okay, that's great. And then, um, you know, Holly had mentioned earlier about the Yellow Roof Foundation. That's the, the language within the document is pretty light on how we're satisfied the, the inclusionary housing requirement. Do we, I, I don't know if there's a question, I think there's probably more of a question for Ms. Feskey about, um, how the calculation is done. There's a 10% requirement. I'm assuming we're rounding down. So one unit out of 18, that accurate?
No, we actually, um, it's, it's one solid unit for, so anything over 10, uh, units is 10% and, and so we require the one. It didn't reach the two threshold, so, um, we can only require the one. If they could build a point eight, we'd make them build a point eight, but we can't.
Okay. Yeah. So we're rounding to the nearest whole unit. Okay, got it. That makes sense. Um, the document itself doesn't really describe like how that will be, um, monitored, I guess, is how I would say. Uh, you know, our, our, our mutual calls for, you know, a number of requirements on the submission of information and whatnot. Is that, did I miss that in the document?
There's actually a, a condition of that it be deed restricted and, um, as part of the deed restriction, it would be deed restricted as an affordable unit, um, which has, uh, a typical lifespan on it. And then that means you can't, um, sell it for, um, for some outrageous price. It's, it's pretty much set. Um, and then, um, there are, there are certain, um, restrictions um, that you cannot, uh, you, you cannot.
No, yeah, I, I understand that. But I guess it, you know, when I look at the, the requirement, there's discussion of, you know, management procedure to qualify, how we track who's going to qualify, maintaining records, you know, how they get submitted to the city for verification. Is that included in the document or do we kind of take that as a catch-all, like that's going to be deed restricted and then we take it, the details later? I'm not, I, I think it's more administrative, but I just didn't see it.
It is more administrative. Um, in general, the, the condition just says it has to be deed, deed restricted for affordability. And then we work out, um, the actual language of the deed restriction, um, administratively. If it's something that, um, you know, passes through all of staff and city attorney review and we're just like not happy with it, we're going to bring it back. Um, as a separate condition at that time.
If I might.
Yeah, cause I guess I don't, oh.
I'm sorry.
Mala, you were.
Usually we have a regulatory agreement that lays out all the details. Um, and so that, that'll have all the information that I think you're looking for. It's a standard agreement that we, that we put together.
Yeah, I mean, it's fairly normal for what we've done. So is that going to be included later? It's just, that's not included in this?
That is correct.
Okay. But we do expect to include those regular provisions. In the future? Okay. Cause I guess the order of operations, I just want to clear, because if we, if we move forward to. Okay, I guess the order of operations, I just want to clear, because if we, if we move forward tonight and, you know. You know, vote to approve this project and all the provision that you outlined in the beginning. Does that still give us an avenue to add those other things that, you know, to append to the approval later? Like, I, I'm not sure how the order works.
The deed restriction has to be in place before the building permit or this, or the certificate of occupancy. So we do have catchalls, you know, during the, so you're just approving the, the land use and the concept. Once they start pulling building permits, that's when we get into the administrative work. And it's either triggered at building permit time or at certificate of occupancy time.
Okay, sounds good. And then, you know, the letter that Holly referenced from the Tices, I, I read through it as well and it. There was a few assumptions, so I wasn't sure if these were addressed. But, you know, they, they had discussed concerns around, you know, drainage and flooding or potential flooding, sorry. With regard to the topography changes, did, is, is there a concern there regarding the such a long frontage? Along the side of that property with the way that the catch basin is going to work? Cause you know, I guess, let me, let me, let me elaborate. So, you know, in their comment, they say that the design of the four hundred fifty long, four hundred fifty foot long swell. Doesn't detail how it's going to impact the, the property line or how it will be designed for flooding into the adjacent parcel. They, they described discussions that were had, but I'm not sure if those were drawn to conclusion.
Good, would you like us to chime in if that's okay?
Yes.
So, thank you very much. So, and I believe Mr. Scott Allman, your city engineer is on as well, and he can attest to any of this as well. With the vesting tentative map that's been prepared and gone through staff review and is before you all this evening. We've done all the preliminary drainage and design calculations with our civil engineering team. And from that standpoint, the preliminary design all checks out with final design. Should we be granted approval with the final construction documents and improvement plans? We'll have all that nitty gritty fine detail to show the final design and, and confirming everything will work. So I believe the swell that the, the Stices are referring to along their property line, just due to the nature of the property. And trying to preserve their existing fence line and the trees and the vegetation that kind of straddles their side of the property line with, with ours. We'll have some future fine grading plans to make sure that their trees are preserved. And then that drainage swell is also maintained in perpetuity with certain easements recorded against each lot. So that a future homeowner cannot alter it. So that drainage is not stopped to go to the basin that they would be directed towards. And then also there is also, I believe we have conditions of approval where the city also has step and rights to inspect and review. And make sure that that drainage is maintained in perpetuity, in addition to the HOA as well.
Okay, I have my last question. The road on Mitchell Canyon in that area, is that, is that considered in, yeah, I forget the different classifications of roads. Arterial, a feeder road, or I remember what the other one was, something else. And, and the reason I ask is because, you know, there's, there has been concern over traffic in that area. And I know that the different classifications of road dictate our ability to adjust speed limits based on different levels of evidence. So does anyone, I don't know if, if either Scott or Matt under, if I'm being clear on what I'm asking. That on Mitchell Canyon, so not the private road or whatever that's going to be, but on Mitchell Canyon. I'm not, I, I don't recall what the speed limit is there, but is that one of the roads where we have to do traffic surveys? Or is it like considered a residential local road where we can set the speed limit at our discretion?
I think due to the size of the road, it would be a collector or an arterial. Lynn is our traffic engineer is, is in the meeting as well. And she's the one that really should be answering this for you, but I do not believe it would be considered a local road. Partly because of the, of the types of traffic that are on it with, you know, truck traffic coming out of the quarry and that sort of thing. So I think it would definitely be, you know, my opinion would be a collector or possibly an arterial, but I would say a collector.
Okay, and so I think, I believe with collector roads, we, we still may have the required traffic survey rather than just setting the speed limit at our discretion.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, it's unfortunate, but okay.
Do you need Lynn to clarify?
No, that's okay. I mean, it'd be nice to know what the classification of that road is. Because it's, I mean, it's a, it's a two lane road, one way, undivided with, you know, residential units fronting directly on the street. You know, I think it, it meets certain characteristic of a local road, but, you know, I don't know, the laws don't always make sense, so.
Let's, let's bring Lynn in then, and she's on the call anyway. I see she's unmuted, so Lynn.
Good evening. It is a collector road. We did do a radar speed survey on it and it is set at twenty five miles an hour.
Oh, okay, great. And then I guess my last, I just wanted to, you know, I, I want to echo some of the previous comments about the community engagement. I think it really shows in the work.
Good. And, and so, and so all of the, the stipulations that the planning commission, talking about trees and things like that, that, those have all been taken care of, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Okay, great. So we're gonna, Holly, yes?
Sorry, I have one more question, just a point of clarification because I missed the December eight meeting. It's not uploaded, unfortunately. So the parking issue, I'm sure was probably addressed ad nauseam. So forgive me for my question, but will there be parking allowed on both sides of the street in front of the houses? Excluding, I believe it's eight and nine. I saw somewhere there was going to be a red curb down on that end, but.
Sure, yeah, so if, if it's okay, I'll go ahead and share screen one more time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see. Whoops, I guess I'm going the other way. So to, to answer your question, is each, each home will have its own two car garage, every single one. Driveways large enough for an additional two cars for their, their visitors and guests. As our future HOA and their CCNRs will stipulate that garages are designed and intended to be used for garages where vehicles are supposed to be. Not, not for personal storage to, to ensure that the vehicles are kept off the road. And being a private roadway, the streets section that we've designed has one side with parking. So this side on the northern boundary of the proposed private roadway. Will have the designated surplus guest parking stalls for the community. And I believe the red striping you're referring to will be down towards this end. Where it really tapers off and it's for fire access to make sure that there is no parking on both sides where the hammerhead is for a fire truck to turn around and go. And then this will be the side, the sidewalk is on as well within the community for people to, to get out of the cars and whatnot, so.
Fifteen parking spaces.
Fifteen surplus guest parking spaces within here as well, so.
So just to clarify then, the visitors will not be able to park on the opposite side of the street from your, your diagram that you just now showed?
That is correct.
Will it be painted red? I'm like, pardon us with emergency vehicles and being able to come in and out if, if it's not red, all the way around.
You are correct. I recall the Contra Costa County Fire Protection, Protection District put that as a condition of approval in their review letter, so that'll definitely be done.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions, keep it, Peter, okay?
All right, one minor comment is I really appreciate you're putting in the homeowners, homeowners association. CCNRs that they are acknowledging the fact that they are located next to a quarry. It's important that people know that that's the case and I know the complaints of dust there. And I appreciate your thinking about, but this question for Matthew in particular, because I'm. I, I can, I'm, I'm looking at this project and I'm learning a lot from it relative to future planning. And I noticed that lot eighteen has an ADU plus, I think sixteen and fourteen also have ADUs proposed for them. Matthew, can you explain to me why ADUs are not by definition considered affordable? And the reason why I'm asking this question is not related, is kind of related to this project. Because obviously lot eighteen has an ADU, which I would be considering affordable. Theoretically, you have two units, the house and then the ADU itself. So I'm just kind of getting an idea of definition. And relative to when we look at future planning, if we look at ADUs as a possibility of adding to a number for our housing numbers. Aren't they by vote affordable? So help me out with that, please.
Certainly, so accessory dwelling units are better known as ADUs. They are not required to be affordable housing units. If they are designated as affordable, which, which means they will be typically rented or sold at whatever the medium is. And then the percentage and all that good stuff as defined by the state. Then, then it is counted towards our, our arena numbers. However, it is not required. That is one of the things that the state law, when they passed the ADU law, they specifically took that out. You have heard second units, granny flats, in-law units before. Some of those are actually required to be affordable units. But, but when they passed the ADU law, they specifically took out that, that requirement. And the idea behind it or the intent behind it is to promote the single family housing units. And now multifamily housing units to actually increase their density. So by allowing them to have these units, they can have their extended families stay there. They can have their, their, their son and daughter who graduated from college that can't get a job and they have to live at home. They don't want them inside their home, so they now have their own home, so to speak. So it was all to promote that. But, but one of the, will these ever count towards our arena numbers, you know, towards affordable housing? And the whole idea is, well, if we don't require it, then people will do it on their own. That's, that was the thought behind it. Is it happening fifty fifty, right? Some people are building ADUs just because they want extra space. They don't want family members living in their house or they want extra income. And this is one way to do it. Other folks are building ADUs as affordable housing units as part of new developments to meet those, those requirements. So long answer, short, not required.
I could piggyback off that a little bit too, from the developer's perspective, if you would like. So just another example of a nearby town in Contra Costa County, not too far away over in Pleasant Hill. Their ordinance is similar, but also a little bit different from Clayton's inclusionary housing ordinance, which is section seventeen point nine two of the municipal code. Where they do upfront require 10% inclusionary. But they allow the alternative where instead of a 10% for, you know, a traditional style unit. They would like to see 20% of the homes in the, in a project have ADUs. So we actually just completed a project at the intersection of Taylor Boulevard and Mercury Way over by that Kinders over there. If you're familiar with that part of Pleasant Hill, where we did four homes in an eighteen unit project. Where they each had an ADU in them and that satisfied that 20% requirement. Because the way the state counts, counts your arena, even though ADUs are not primarily owned or primarily occupied units. You are allowed to add them to your arena. So based on their inclusionary housing ordinance and the conditions of approval. Those ADUs for that community counted as the affordable component. And then just as a natural stance with ADUs with the new state laws that Mr. Feskey mentioned, ADUs are also intended to be affordable by design. So depending on the way an ordinance is structured, it can be allowed by design or in the way of the Pleasant Hill example. Doubling their normal requirement to get more ADUs out of it for that diversified housing stock. And I've gone back and toured that community a couple of times just because it's close by. I've actually seen the example of the in-laws living there and the examples of it being rented out. Another example of a household where they're, they have young children or older, older, young children that have come home from college that are staying there as they transition into, you know, their more adult life. So it really provides that diversified housing, which is why we also wanted to include it on a couple just to, you know, you technically have 21 units for your arena now with this project. With those ADUs that we've incorporated into the three of the lots.
That, I really appreciate that. That's why I thought the, your design was kind of unique and why I was curious why those additional ADUs were not counting towards our numbers. And it sounds like it's because we don't have it as an ordinance on our books yet, correct?
We don't.
Am I misinterpreting what you just said?
No, not really. We, we, if we want to consider the ADUs as, as part of our arena account and affordable housing count. We do need to revisit it and, and possibly add some language that would help us be able to justify counting it.
Thanks, again, this has been a great project for overall looking at how we plan in the future. And that's why I'm kind of being a little bit redundant in my questions is that I think it's, it's good for all of us to kind of learn from this. Thank you, I, I appreciate it.
Jeff?
Actually, that brings something to mind. On one of the concerns that, you know, the Tices brought up was that ADUs would not be placed against certain areas on the boundary. And I think depending on the proximity to adjacent properties, you know, that, that's a fairly normal concern. But my understanding, and I, I believe this is true, is that the future residents can place ADUs anywhere on the property that they want. I think the required, the, the maximum setback which it requires is like five feet.
Four feet, I think.
So, I mean, I mean, that's shorter than my wingspan, right? So, I mean, I just want to be like, I don't want to give people the wrong impression. That somehow ADUs are not possible in those areas. Just because they're not being constructed in the original design, there's nothing to say that in the future. You couldn't put, you know, two ADUs per property against the fence line if you really wanted to. I, I don't think there's anything that would allow anyone to restrict that at this point in time with the way the state law is. Is that about right?
Yeah, the HOA would have no say so, isn't it?
No, okay, I just wanted, I mean, that's not really a question. I, I mean, it's kind of a confirmation, but I just want to make sure that that's clear. Because I don't want the placement of ADUs or not in certain lots. To give the impression that there would not be others in other lots in the future. It's, it's very obvious, I think, when you look at the rule, that ADUs can be placed essentially on any property multiple times in almost any location. Anyways, that was it.
Anybody else going once, going twice? Yes, Holly.
I think we're determined to beat these ADUs to death. Okay, so when Peter asked a question about the ADUs and whether or not they were affordable. And I think it was said that it wasn't a requirement that they were and that we would need to change our ordinance in order for them to be counted that way. So. Aren't we saying that the unit eighteen or, or lot eighteen is affordable? And was, and it's got the ADU on the lot? I'm a little confused on how both pieces, the home and the ADU, is meeting the affordability component.
So with, with the 10% requirement and the ordinance and with eighteen lots that comes up with the calculation of 1.8. Buried within the, not buried within the ordinance, it's in there, you just have to read it a little bit. But it goes at section seventeen point nine two point zero three zero. Stipulates that when you have a low income unit, it counts as 1.5. So our vision for lot eighteen was that the primary dwelling would be a moderate income unit. And the ADU itself would be a low income unit. So that within one lot, we are achieving, you know, if you were to round up, we're at two units on that one lot. Was the original intent and the goal for Yellow Roof Foundation to manage and find qualified tenants for those, for that home. Where we have the two separately occupiable units. And if you would like, I can share my screen one more time and pull up the floor plan. Just so you can see what it would look like if my computer wasn't running slow. Here we go. So the ADU has its own separate entrance off the front door. So that lot eighteen section, this would be flipped where the entry is actually facing Mitchell Canyon Road to engage the street scene in the elevation, if you will. So it has its own living room, kitchenette, sleeping, its own individual bath, its own washer and dryer, stand up stacking washer and dryer area. And then the primary unit is for the rest of the home. So that was our vision for lot eighteen. If it's, I believe the council also has the discretion to modify their inclusionary however it likes. If you would like to have three restricted units, we would not be opposed to lot 18. The primary unit being market rate with the ADUs being restricted. At, you know, a low income level for, you know, if someone were, if a tenant were or an owner were to rent them out. They'd be at a low income level. So then you'd have three low income units, similar to how Pleasant Hill operates with their ordinance. So we're we're open to that idea if if the council desires, but. Our original vision and proposal was for lot 18 to have a moderate with a primary and a low with the ADU for to meet that, get close to that 1.8.
So Holly, are you are you done? Hold on.
I'm trying to figure out how to articulate my question because I thought that. When Jeff asked the question about how come we weren't rounding up to two because 18 is closer to two. We were told we had to have full unit, so I the verbiage around one and a half. And 1.8, I'm a little lost on on that right now when we're trying to calculate the 10%.
Nick Mala wants to jump in on this.
Yeah, I did want to clarify that. I did pull up the ordinance and it provides that. If a fractional unit occurs, which is the point eight. The developer has the option of either providing another full unit or paying an in lieu fee fee for the fractional unit. But then there is also a provision as the applicant has indicated. That if only low income units are provided in lieu of moderate income units, a credit of one and a half units to every one unit shall be provided. So regardless, that fractional unit is at the developer's request is either. In rounded up or an in lieu fee is paid for the fractional amount.
And just to.
A fractional amount.
And to piggyback off of that, the reason our our proposal and vision for lot 18. Was it what we thought to be an original creative solution to try to satisfy the inclusionary housing ordinance's intent? Because they're also the Clayton does not have an adopted in lieu fee. So we've we figured we came up with a creative solution to provide, you know, the diversified affordable housing. As the intent of the ordinance is written from the way we we viewed it at least.
And to to so you know, we wanted the unit, we didn't want, we didn't want the money, we want the housing count. So that's we were pushing for that, meaning staff.
Okay.
Peter?
Yeah, I just, I'm muted. I just thought that, again, I'm just trying to remember from the the conversation with the planning commission. That that there were two units for some reason.
Yeah, I did, I did too.
Not one unit. So I'm just just trying to put it all together. That's why I thought eight lot 18 was was both affordable. It was it was deemed affordable, both for the 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 moderate income house and the ADU were. So that counted towards two units in my in my head. So I don't know, I'm kind of missing something.
Yeah, no, you have it.
You're correct. That's exactly it.
So it is two units then, not not one.
Correct. Well, it's, yeah, it's the accessory dwelling unit added on to it, but both of them will be deed restricted. So you have two deed restricted affordable rental units in the mix.
And and to clarify with the applicant, the ADU then will be required to be rented out since.
I thought both units in the documentation said they were going to be rented out. That's why I asked my question. Okay, all right.
I just wanted to make sure that the if the primary unit was rented out, that the renters didn't just have the ADU, you know.
That is correct.
Okay.
A hundred percent.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm hearing crickets. Just a minute. Okay. All right. So if there are no other questions, we'll go to a public comment. I think we have someone I thought Denise Persh, Pershie, Bersh. I'm sorry if I'm saying that wrong. You can correct me. Janet?
All right, I have promoted her up to panelist, and if she can just unmute, we can start the timer.
Okay, Denise, you're on. And Denise, sorry, but how do you pronounce your last name? Oh, she's not there yet. Back on mute, Denise. A little trouble. Does she need to call in or? I know we had some trouble last time getting her on.
Ms. Persh, if you'd like to call, my number is nine two five six seven three seven three zero four.
Doesn't show her as muted, but not hearing anything. Do we have any anyone else in the in the queue? No, only one.
I have Denise on the landline, so I'll go ahead and start the timer. And Denise, go ahead.
And Denise, we'll let you know when you get close to 30 seconds or so, if you can't see your screen.
All right, Denise, you're on.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry about that. It's something to do with mine, a computer that doesn't let me talk through the computer.
Denise, Denise, how do you pronounce your last name?
It's Persha, like Portia.
I see. Thank you.
Portia, but. Anyway, thank you for taking my call tonight. But, you know, my only comment about this plan development, and I don't live near it. It is, you know, in my town Clayton, of course, I live I live in Clayton. But my only comment about it is parking, and I know parking was brought up, but. You know, I know that there are two garage spaces and that there are two car spaces. It's almost for sure that each of those houses are going to have more than two cars. And in fact, I'm going to make a bet that they're going to have three at least. And if they have guests, they may have more than one guest. And to have parking only on one side of the street, I think is a problem. My suggestion to Peter Cloven was, and to also to. Someone on the planning commission was Denzlo was that perhaps that they might be able to build a small parking lot. That would be only used for guest parking. Maybe that would be five or six. Car, you know, place. In addition to the one side of the street, and I think that that's going to be a lot better for the community that move into those homes. I think that there might be space near the oak tree to do that. And if not there, perhaps along the other side where the trail is at, maybe you could do a parallel parking area. I don't know if that's possible with the, you know, the vehicles. Emergency vehicles going into that area of the road. But that would be my only comment. Other than that, I think it's a wonderful project. And I'm happy to see that this housing developer worked with the neighbors. And I would look for that as the litmus test for any future build in our town. We seem to have had lots of. You know, people who are quite upset about Olivia project and at its current place. I am upset about that project. It is way too big, too dense for the area that it is. So I'm glad to see this project and the work that you have done, the city council, the planning commission with this developer. So good job. That's the end of my comments. Thank you so much. Bye bye.
Thank you. Thank you for calling in. I'm glad that we were able to get you. All right, Jen, I don't think there's anyone else, right?
No, I do not have any other hands raised for this item.
Okay, then we'll close the public comment on that and bring it back to council. Any questions, comments, motions?
I'd say the beauty of a private street is that if they run into parking problems, they have the ability to resolve them themselves. So. You know.
Yeah.
It's up to them. Good luck.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe there were there's two in the garage and two in the driveway, so there's enough spots for four vehicles to park at each home. Which is great, plus the additional on the side of the street.
I mean, if you have, if you have a resident presenting an issue, the HOA will have the ability to correct that issue.
Right.
So I guess we're, yeah, Peter?
No, I'm just saying it's it's nice to have a project presented to me. I mean, I I've been in the planning commission for three years. So to be in a city council position to have heavy lifting done for us. By staff and the planning commission before us is kind of a, it's kind of a nice place to be, and I appreciate it.
Well, I think it's a testament to the builder that that there was no one on the line tonight. You know, they've covered, they've covered all their bases. I don't really have any questions. Everything's been exhausted out here.
We're looking for a motion?
Motion for.
So do we have to read it all or can we just?
How can we condense this, Raina? What what's the proper language? There's a lot of.
To move as presented.
Move as presented. Does anybody want to move as presented?
I'll move as presented.
I'll let Jeff move it as presented.
Okay, so and second from you, Holly?
Sure.
Okay, so we have a council member one, council member Tillman. Okay, Janet. Call about.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman.
Hi.
Councilmember Juan?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cloven?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes. And so moved.
Thank you all very, very much. We are very excited to keep keep everything rolling. So thank you very much. Sincerely.
Go forth and be merry.
Thank you for all your diligence.
Thank you. And thank you city staff for getting us here this evening. We really appreciate the collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Okay, so we'll move on from this now and we'll move to council items for requests for directors of future meetings. Anybody? Nope. Okay, closed session. We have none. So we are going to adjourn this meeting. Our next city council meeting will be February the 16th. Thanks, you. Thanks to everybody for tuning in. Good night.
Night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.